I am Kate Ford, and we have concluded closed session this evening. And on June 8th, 2021, at 6:35 PM, I am calling to order this regular meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District School Board. And now for information about interpretation for this meeting.
Thank you, Board President Ford. Good afternoon. I will give this announcement with regards to language interpretation in both English and Spanish. Buenas tardes. Voy a dar este anuncio sobre la interpretación en inglés y en español. In order to provide language access, we will be providing simultaneous bidirectional interpretation in English and Spanish. If you are bilingual, you do not have to click anything. If you are not bilingual in English and Spanish, you will have to select your language in order to hear the interpretation. If you are using a laptop or a desktop, at the bottom right of your screen, you will see a globe icon that says "Interpretation." Please click on the globe now and select "English." If you are using an iPad or a phone, locate the three-dot menu and select "Language Interpretation," then select "English" and click "Done." And remember, when it's your turn to speak, please remember to be loud and clear and speak at a moderate pace. Thank you. And we are offering American Sign Language, ASL, interpretation for this meeting. If you will be using ASL interpretation, please use the Zoom app on your computer, tablet, or phone to join this meeting. If you joined this meeting through your web browser, you may not be able to see the ASL interpreter at all times. Esta reunión contará con interpretación simultánea bidireccional en inglés y en español. Si usted es bilingüe, no tiene que presionar nada. Si usted no es bilingüe, tendrá que elegir su idioma para escuchar la interpretación. Si está usando una computadora, verá un icono en la parte inferior de su pantalla a la derecha en forma de globo que dice "Interpretación." Haga clic ahí ahora y seleccione "Español." Si está usando su iPad o su teléfono, localize el menú de tres puntos, haga clic en "Interpretación de idiomas," elija "Español," y finalizar. O si está en inglés, dice "Done." Y recuerde, cuando sea su turno de hablar, por favor, hable con voz fuerte y clara y a un paso moderado. Gracias. Thank you. We may now begin.
Thank you. And Superintendent Maldonado, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Please rise, face the flag.
Do we have an American flag?
Right behind you. Right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And now, we will continue with the agenda. During closed session, no action, no votes were taken. As you can see, the Board and Cabinet are once again meeting in person while the public may participate through live streaming on YouTube. We thank you for joining us in whatever way you can. It's important to also announce that the Office of Governor Gavin Newsom issued a letter on June 2nd announcing Executive Order N 2920, which provided flexibility for school boards and state and local agencies to conduct their business through virtual public meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic that will not terminate on June 15th. Even though other changes will happen, and we've been hearing about them throughout the state, the governor acknowledged that school districts and other public agencies just need more time and adequate time to adjust to any new guidance about public meetings and the Brown Act. We are all very interested in the new guidance, especially since we have seen such tremendous public participation here through virtual participation. So stay tuned. Also, I wanted to let you know that tonight we will continue with our two regularly scheduled reports, the COVID-19 at 7:00 PM and the Summer of Learning at 8:30 PM. In between them, there will be two public hearings, one on the proposed budget and one on the LCAP plan. We will do the LCAP plan hearing at 7:30 and the proposed budget hearing at 8:00. Also, the budget, the Board is going to take its 10-minute break sometime, as close to 8:30 as possible or as reasonable. So, Dr. Maldonado, will you now continue with your report to the Board?
Greetings. Is this? Greetings, Board President Ford, members of the School Board, staff, and all our attendees.
I don't think we can hear you. Can you move the mic closer?
Greetings, President Ford, members of the School Board, staff, and all of our attendees tonight. This week, we're in the midst of our Educators' Summer Learning Institute entitled "Equity in Action." We have about 400 of our local teachers, counselors, and other certificated school staff participating. They are enjoying a week of workshops, inspiring speakers, and sessions. They are reflecting on the work, reconnecting, recharging their batteries, and starting to gear up for the, believe it or not, 2021-2022 school year. I'd like to begin my comments by acknowledging one of our most treasured longtime employees, who is celebrating 40 years with Santa Barbara Unified. I'm going to ask her to come up. Rosa Cavaletto began her career at Franklin Elementary School in 1981 before moving to Washington Elementary, where she has been a fixture ever since. Ms. Cavaletto is the longest-serving elementary school office manager in our district. She is the indispensable right-hand person and has been to a parade of principals, including Alice Tarbush, Jerry Fawcett, Stan Zelatell, Pat Morales, Sierra Lockridge, and the current principal Denise Granger. Ms. Cavaletto has been a mentor, confidant, and a source of wisdom and inspiration to hundreds of district staff and students over her career. We are delighted to honor her this evening with a 40-year service pin, which I will hand to her now, along with a bouquet of flowers.
Thank you. You know, I've been here 40 years because I love my job. I love the kids, the parents, the staff, and, you know, thank you for, you know, doing what you can for all the kids and staff of this school district. We truly appreciate it. Thank you.
As a former principal myself, I cannot ever thank enough all our office managers who give so much to our school district and whose leadership often goes unrecognized. So, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
And I know that her family is here as well to join her, her son, her daughter, her daughter-in-law, and her grandson. Can we have you come up? You want to come up here to the middle? You want to say his name?
This is Gio.
You want to introduce him?
This is Gio, and he is a graduate kindergarten from Washington School.
Come inside, come inside over here and take a picture. Yes. I'm going to send Gio and all of them. That's so nice.
My other gray-eyed baby is sitting over there. Oh, they're not so. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for all your stuff. That is exactly right, Mrs. Cavaletto. We do want to also thank the family for all the hours that you get to, that you've given up with her to be with us. We know it's a great sacrifice for all family members of school district employees because we are with the children when the families go to work. So, thank you to the family members as well. And I see Ms. Lockridge is here to also provide congratulatory. So, I am going to share some preliminary data, but before I do that, I think I'm going to reverse the order here. I'd like to bring up next a student who just graduated from our school district, Karina Carachure. I believe Board Member Alvarez and Board Member Sims Moten both joined us at the graduation at La Cuesta. And Karina Carachure was one of the selected student speakers. I'd like to take a moment now to go from Rosa to Karina so we can look at that thread of what really happens with our students and ask her to share her speech from her graduation. Welcome, Karina, and thank you for being here.
Good evening, Superintendent Maldonado, President Ford, members of the School Board and district staff. My name is Karina Carachure. Before I make my remarks, I would like to take this opportunity to thank from the deepest part of my heart the community that I have found at Alta Vista High School, my teachers, my friends, and my family. I am nervous to be standing here, but I have challenged myself and built the courage to gather my fondest memories and pieces of my life that have shaped this very moment. There's so many things that I want to share, but the one that I believe to be most truthful to my way of life is that I come from a family of dreamers. This very moment was carved in my head since the third grade. I vividly remember sitting on my desk with my head down, dreaming of the moment that I would see my parents' proud smiles on my graduation day as I spoke in a language that promises success in this country. My family, like all immigrant families, came to the United States to chase after the American dream. And for so long, there was a constant fear of a certainty of the future, a fear of rejection in this country that I so foolishly believed in the acceptance that would come with time, that the whole of having to leave my home in Mexico, my roots and my people would be cured through a process of assimilation. However, the more I observed the world through experiences, I realized that there's not a need for change in oneself based on the validations and expectations of others. There's only a change needed in ourselves to fully realize where we come from and what we are made of. Through this journey in life where lessons can only be learned, I have collected pieces of advice that I am eager to share with you today. That is, each one of us has the power to open our wings of strength and reach for the impossible, to chase beyond the borders of obstacles and find what to live for, to run through the depths of obscurity and pave the way for our people. It will be hard, but it will inspire those who will come after us for future generations. The passion that burns inside of us is enough to keep us looking into a future that only we can conquer. From here and now, I promise to find the true meaning of life, to live and not just survive. It would be selfish to meet us stand here and say that I did it all by myself and that who I am today was only made possible by me. But that is not the case. Every piece of success in my life was paved through a road that my parents led through sacrifice by my friends who brought laughter in the most difficult time. By my teachers and every single person that believes in my dreams. Thank you especially to Regina Carmelita and Michael Wilds, to the lessons learned that reaching for the stars from my grandmother's open roof was only the beginning. And the many times I failed to find an answer, I learned to listen to the beat of my heart as it's book "Write Back the Answer." Perhaps the greatest piece of advice I can offer would be to once in a while pause, cover your ears, and listen to what the voice inside of you desperately longs to tell you. With that being said, I would like to express my excitement for each one of us today as we head towards the road that we are destined to live but can only be reached if we dare to follow it. Today will go down as one of our greatest accomplishments, and I would like to dedicate mine to my parents and to my Hispanic community, who Patricia Engel once beautifully described us, "All immigrants are artists because they create a life, a future from nothing but a dream." Thank you for inviting me here.
That's so great. I'm so proud of you. I have so, I have so.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Cheers. I'm going to get him too. I'd like to. Board members, I'd also like to thank her mom, who's here with her. And if we can give mom a round of applause. Queremos, queremos agradecerle a usted y su esposo por todo lo que han hecho por su hija también y tener fe en nuestro distrito. I wanted to thank her and her husband for all they've done for their daughter and for having faith in our school district. Thank you. At this time, Board Member, just to close us off quickly, I'd like to share, Sandra, I think you have my slide deck? Ms. Barnwell, does Sandra have my slide deck? We have it? Okay. So, I just want to share a couple of slides. So, we've just seen the people in our organization, but I want to know that as part of the ending of the year, one of the things I'm looking at and we'll be discussing with Cabinet and school leaders over the summer is looking at our data. I know that we've talked a lot about sharing data and really being transparent about what's happening in our school district when it comes to our students. So, this first slide is all our sixth graders we promoted this year. Shows the demographic breakdown by race and ethnicity of our promoting students across all of our district schools. The largest groups of students we serve in our elementary schools are Hispanic and white, and we also celebrate and serve our other student groups here. As you can see, they are all reflected. The next slide is our sixth-grade class from, sorry, our eighth-grade class from junior high school. Similar breakdown. You can see that in junior high, our demographics began to change slightly in part because we receive students from Galida, Union, Cold Springs Hope, Montecito Union School Districts, as well as local private schools. In our next slide, which is our high school students in 12th grade, you'll notice again that the largest groups of students we continue to serve are Hispanic, Latinos, and Whites. And the percentages of those students don't change that much from eighth grade. And in the last slide, we see the graduation rates at our three traditional high schools and our district-wide anticipated graduation rate. You'll notice that the rates for La Cuesta and Alta Vista are not shown on this particular chart, and that's because student cohort data and graduation timelines are more flexible in the alternative education setting, but we can share that we had over 80 students graduate from alternative ed schools. This content is preliminary. We'll continue to hone in on it, dissected by language status, by ARFIB, Long-Term English Learners, newcomers, English learners, by economic poverty or not as well. And we do notice that our overall district graduation rate is an increase from last year when our graduation rate overall was 91%. It is higher than the statewide graduation rate, which is around 86% overall. And there were approximately 42 students who did not graduate on time in June. And this data does not include students who will leave our district with a certificate of completion. So, again, we're still validating this data for our end-of-year seniors. And you can see that as we look at the high school charts, we should look at them with this predictive or preliminary data lens. We have a team of staff members who will work over the summer, certify that this is correct, and then share it with the State Department of Education. Then it'll go through our data quest and CalPAS and become publicly available next year. But I wanted you to be aware that we are looking at it. We're mindful that the numbers represent people, and so we started with the people first. And that concludes my report, Board members. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you so much. Dr. Maldonado, that was inspiring and encouraging and a great way to start the meeting this evening. And now, with a few minutes, we should be able to at least have some Board members share their comments and correspondence. I'll start with Ms. Munoz.
Thank you, President Ford. I'd like to make a comment about an event I attended this weekend. This past weekend, I attended a homecoming celebration for Mrs. Juana Flores, who was deported two years ago in April due to, let me see, due to immigration concerns. She had been reporting on a regular basis and was deported, like I said, at that time. However, through many efforts of her legal team and local community leaders, she was granted humanitarian parole and reunited with her children, 10 children, including one son who is disabled, and her husband, and they live here in Galida. As part of this Salud Carbo Hall in March 2019 has presented the Protect Patriot Act, which would protect the parents of children that serve in our military. During the event, I had the pleasure of meeting Ryan Cruz, who's a contributing writer for NewsHawk, and found out that he's an alumni of DP of Dos Pueblos High School. And very, you know, wonderful young man, interviewing skills par excellence. And I was very proud to meet, you know, one of our students. In addition to that, you know, along with my sister Board members, I attended the graduations for myself at Franklin High School and also at San Marcos High School. Inspirational speeches. Wonderful to see the students in person and the celebrations with the family in a socially-distanced manner. And thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Sims Moten, please.
Yes, thank you, President Ford. Yeah, it was such an inspiring week. We're starting with the elementary graduation. Her little Led Zeppelin, some air guitars going on, and relentless teasing of one of their teachers who is still single. A sixth-grade humor seems to do that. Also, I had the opportunity to attend a graduation at La Cumbre Junior High, where I became a doctor. I've become a principal and a doctor, so just stay tuned. You know, you get these, like, things going on. And then, of course, the high school graduation at San Marcos. And we were having such a good time with them. They were very on top of making sure their masks were on. We were trying to fist pump and elbow bump. They're like, "Don't bother me. I'm just trying to get this mask back on." So, it was great to see them, and it was such an exciting time to see them. So, again, congratulations to all of them. And my first one was the La Cuesta graduation as a young woman. She caught me crying again, you know, just in terms of those pieces. And, you know, heard some dreamers, just heard some great music. So, just all around, congratulations to all the graduates.
Thank you so much. Ms. Cabs, please.
Yeah, I'll echo that with the graduations this year. Lucky and honored to attend four on each of the levels, elementary and junior high and high school. And I've now, you know, every year, this is a wonderful sort of perk of the job is to be able to sit and fist bump or shake hands with hundreds and hundreds of students. And it was just times 100 more poignant and meaningful. And I've now labeled this class, not just the Class of '21, but the Resilient Class of '21 because we all know what everyone's gone through. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Alvarez.
Of course. Congratulations to all the graduates and a huge, huge thank you to all the teachers for this past year. We learned so much. And my heart's full of gratitude to all the teachers, all of admin, all of classified who made this year happen. To see the students' faces, how happy they were, like Ms. Cabs said, it makes it all worth it, right? It reminds us the reasons why we do this, why we do this, and it's wonderful. And I also want to say thank you to the Santa Barbara High School Alumni Association for their help, their philanthropy, and their kindness towards so many students who they supported in a time of need financially and in other matters. So, thank you. And thank you to all the teachers who are attending the in-service. School gets out last week, and there they are today, learning, being an example of being a continuous learner. So, thank you, teachers, and thank you, staff, for your work.
Thank you so much. And I'll conclude with a few comments. First of all, from the Board, congratulations again to Ms. Cavaletto and Ms. Carachure. Thank you to both of you. You make us feel so proud. And also, congratulations from me too to all the promoted and graduated students last week with special admiration also for the organized and thoughtful, moving ceremonies. It was a wonderful way to end this very challenging school year. And believe me, I just feel it's important to say that we all know that this most joyous and very busy end of the year was the result of incredible dedication, innovation, and hard work by school staffs, administrative staffs, and district office staffs. And I have deep gratitude to all of you for making it happen. I also feel it's important to mention that this is World Ocean's Day, and we live along the beautiful coast of the Pacific Ocean. And I think it's fitting to remind us of our responsibility. Since oceans cover 70% of the planet and provide 50% of our oxygen, it's the main source of protein for a billion people on the planet. And 40 million people make their living and their careers through ocean-related jobs. Yet, we continue to destroy this gift. 90% of the big fish in the world have been depleted, and 50% of all coral reefs. And every minute of every day, a garbage truckload of plastic is dumped in the ocean, every minute of every day. So, don't forget that we can do our part, take public transportation, walk and bike more, use less air conditioning and less heat, stop using single-use plastic, and pick up our trash and take care of these beautiful beaches. And finally, before we continue with our report, it is my honor, as you know, to announce retirements. And tonight, we have six. First of all, retiring is Judy Cosio. She's a teacher at Monroe Elementary. She retired with 17-plus years of service. And Rebecca Frank, a special education teacher from San Marcos High School, retired with 23-plus years of service. Also, Andrea McKeon, a teacher at La Cumbre Junior High School, retired on June 4th with 20-plus years of service. Michelle Minzer from Washington Elementary, the nurse, retired with eight-plus years of service. And Douglas Throop, a teacher at Santa Barbara Junior High School, retired with 10-plus years of service. Finally, Brian Tangway, the HR Classified Person Coordinator, retired also with 22-plus years of service. I want to thank all of you for your service, your dedication, and your contributions to our students and to our district. We wish you a happy and healthy retirement, starting with some well-deserved rest and fun. And that concludes our comments from the Board. And so, it's just about time to begin with our COVID-19 report. So, I will turn this over to Dr. Wagonick. All right. Good evening, Superintendent Maldonado, President Ford, and the Board. This alone is a sign that things are changing. I have not been at this podium for 16 months, I don't think. So, I'm here to give you COVID Board Report Number 22. Next slide, please. Let me give the drivers a little more time. Tonight, these drivers were conceptualized about 13 months ago. And I don't think, I know at that time, we had no idea just how much we would really be relying on these buckets of work to organize all that was coming down the pike for us. But very glad that we did do that planning ahead of time. You'll also notice that Susan Klein Rothschild is not with us tonight. Next slide, please. So, in her stead, I'm going to give you the good news that today, Santa Barbara County entered the yellow tier. That was our goal the whole year. And one week short of the complete reopening and the end of the blueprint, we are in yellow. It doesn't really change a lot about how we do business around here for the next week, but it is a positive sign for our community, which is what is most important. So, we have a .9 daily new case rate and a .7% positivity rate that was announced by Dr. Henning Ansorg earlier today. Next slide, please. And more good news. Since the last time we met, and that was before the end of school, so we did still have students and teachers and other staff working in the schools. In those last two weeks, we've had zero In those last two weeks, we've had zero cases of COVID in our schools. And that's the first time since we started counting back in September that I can say that we had zeros across the board. Again, all signs pointing positively. Next slide, please. So when I made this slide, we were still in the orange and I didn't want to jinx it, so I left it. Surveillance, so we are waiting to hear from the, the health officer. We're waiting to hear from the CDPH about what the, the end of the blueprint means for schools. And so not, don't have anything to report. And until we hear difference, different, we're continuing with our guidelines. So for example, on Monday, Summer of Learning is launching, and we will continue to use iPass, asking parents to report in on how their children are doing. We will take temperatures. In terms of testing for athletes, yes, we do still have athletics, even though school has ended because of the strange year that we had and sports starting later. In fact, at last, we have CIF Regional Championships going on at Santa Barbara High, and they're up two games to none. Also, San Marcos played in quarterfinal softball and baseball. So we continue to do that and we continue to test volleyball, which is an indoor sport. So we are continuing to follow the guidelines. Next slide, please. So in terms of vaccinations, we are going to continue to work with Santa Barbara Public Health, Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinics, to provide vaccinations for those ages 12 and up. And in fact, I'm meeting with Neighborhood Clinics tomorrow to do some planning for how those will roll out over the summer. And then we, next slide, please. Beyond the blueprint, what, what are they saying out there? So again, we are waiting to hear what, hear what the state is, is going to give us in terms of guidance for the next phase. But we do anticipate that there will be masking in certain situations, that we will still, of course, be requiring quarantine for positive cases and those who are close contacts. Some level of screening, we don't exactly know what that'll look like. But if, if in the winter, we have a wave that comes up, or earlier, we would go back to screening. And then of course, testing of some sort. So we're just in a holding pattern with data on that. Next slide, please. And then those key factors that I've talked about in the last few board meetings, really just following the science, looking at what is the best way to keep COVID out of our community and out of our schools. And so I'm frankly pleased to not have a lot to report. So at this point, any, any questions or comments from the board? First of all, let's check about public comments. So Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments on the COVID-19 report?
Good evening, President Ford. Yes, we have six public comment on this item, and I will go ahead and name them all. Marisol Gutierrez, Yvette Chambers, Justin Shores, Jamie Daven, Lori Krieger, Rodney Maher. I will go ahead and start with Marisol Gutierrez. And Marisol Gutierrez is not online, so I'll go ahead and go to Yvette Chambers. Ms. Chambers is also not online. I will go to Justin Shores. Mr. Shores, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, just want to let you guys know, I've been watching the OSHA board meetings and this board meeting, and it's pretty frustrating to see how you guys react to public comment and to emails. Everyone kicks it back to each, each other. So OSHA is, is in charge, I guess, and that's who you're sending back to parents when we ask, what's, what's the deal? Why can't we go forward? What's going on past the 15th? So it's, it's somebody needs to advocate for us at this point. We've, there was 500 people talking at the OSHA board. We were all against masks. There was maybe two or three that were, were for it. Masks don't work. They, they're, they're only for show at this point. And that's, that's right out of Dr. Fauci. That's right off the box of masks that are actually made for, for N95s, not just the cloth ones you're making us wear, which hold bacteria and a lot of other things. So anyone mandating the face mask is ignoring science. And you guys need to step up and advocate for us at some point. Children are being hurt by this. There's, there's children hospitals across the country that are, are having mental health crisis because of the unprecedented amount of children who need immediate treatment because of suicidal thoughts. This is, this is going towards the masks and the lockdowns that have been in these states. So some of these, some of our states have chosen to go farther than other states. In fact, that's what some of these boards are saying. They're like, we want to protect people more and not give them a choice. We're not even going to give them a choice. We're going to require this stuff when it could actually be hurting. Right now, there's a mental, or an emergency in Los Angeles, and actually in every California county for children having heart issues because of the vaccines, the mRNA ones. You're pushing that on kids who really don't get affected by the, the virus. So it'd be healthier for them to have a virus than to have a heart problem. Because your body can naturally fight a virus, and they've been, kids have been shown to do really well. So my biggest thing here is just, just wake up a little bit. We need you to fight back against this. You know, I can see already it's going to go past the 15th, which was the carrot that was dangled. Your job as a board is to, to advocate for people and save the health of the kids, which you may think you're doing, but you also need to look outside of your bubble of California and the CDPH. There is other places who have other data that is real. It's not, it's not fake. So you need to wake up to that. My, make everything optional, you know, just, just let people have the choice. There's a lot of people that will choose to do what they want. You have adults who, who are in charge of their children. Let us put masks on them if they want. Let us not put a mask on if we want, we don't want. But you guys need to give us the choice.
Time, thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Daven. Jamie, can you unmute yourself?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Hi, good evening. My name is Jamie Daven, and I have a daughter who will be entering kindergarten in the fall. And I do have some concerns about the current school COVID protocols that may extend into the next school year. The developing data has been showing that children are not in a high-risk category when it comes to COVID. Studies show children are not main spreaders of COVID. And there is really no scientific data showing that it's beneficial for kids to be in masks at school all day. Actually, upon reviewing a multitude of mask studies, the CDC found no reduction in viral transmission with the use of face masks. And a recent study involving over 25,000 school-aged children shows that masks are harming schoolchildren physically, psychologically, and behaviorally, and revealed 24 distinct health issues associated with wearing masks. These health issues and impairments that were observed were found to affect 68% of masked children who were forced to wear face covering for an average of four and a half hours per day. There were also almost 18,000 health complaints submitted by the parents. The Children's Hospital of Colorado recently declared a state of emergency due to 80% increase in attempted suicide and mental health issues in children this last year. This is not right. I would like to know what Santa Barbara County's pediatric mental health numbers look like for this past year. Children need to be able to see their peers' and teachers' faces, their facial expressions and smiles. Human beings, especially ones who are still developing, need to be touched. They need to hug and play. They need to interact with each other. It is shown that isolation is extremely detrimental to normal social, emotional, and mental development. Forced masking and forced distancing is going to create an even bigger crisis for our younger populations in the coming years. Really, the only potentially at-risk person in the classroom is the teacher. They have the option to wear a mask, a face shield, and also get vaccinated if they choose. Kids wearing masks should be optional, and it's a decision made by the parents, not the school or public health boards. With this being said, the CDC and other agencies like OSHA, they make recommendations. They do not make laws. The California Health Department also makes recommendations. They're not laws. At the end of the day, no matter what these agencies recommend, it is up to our county and our schools to you, who we have elected to represent us and our children's best interests, to enforce these regulations. You have the power and the right to decide what to enforce at the schools in Santa Barbara. And I call on you to stand up for our kids and to support our children's mental and emotional health over a pass-down protocol.
Time, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Lori Krieger.
Hi, this is Lori.
Go ahead.
I'm the mother of a soon-to-be fifth grader. And my son returned to in-person school in March. My concern about his return to school had very little to do with him contracting COVID. His age group is at the lowest risk of contracting or dying of COVID-19 with a 99% recovery rate. And it had more to do with the environment, feeling like a security checkpoint. I still can't shake the image of him walking up to a masked, gloved adult holding a small gun-like thermometer to his forehead to let him into school that first day and the subsequent normalization of this daily activity. My son told me several times this spring, he hated wearing a mask, that he felt lightheaded or had a headache while in class. Outdoors, he needed to move well away from others for a short mask break, even though it's well documented that outdoor transmission of this virus is rare. Right before summer break, our school conducted a fundraiser where kids gathered pledges and ran laps to earn money. Parents were advised that masks were required at the event, even though kids were outdoors in small cohorts with adequate spacing. I had concerns about masking kids while they are exerting themselves physically and breathing their own carbon dioxide. But with eight days left of school, there would be no exception to the district mask policy. My son elected not to participate. In the first German study on mask-wearing, which was published back in January of this year, 68% of children reported side effects after wearing masks at school, including irritability, headaches, difficulty in concentrating, sadness, malaise, impaired learning and fatigue and drowsiness. Children also complained of other physical symptoms, rashes, allergies, nausea, hyperventilation, and fainting spells. And a quarter of the children developed anxieties. Now, even with all of our good intentions and our belief in the resilience of kids, I believe we're overlooking the serious social, emotional, mental, and physical implications of long-term mask-wearing in schools. I also want to speak to the recent move to have vaccine clinics on school campuses. The CDPH issued a health advisory on May 28th about cases heart of myocarditis, excuse me, and pericarditis in young adults and adolescents shortly after being vaccinated with the mRNA vaccines. In Israel, I'm not sure if you're aware, there are 148 reports of young men between the ages of 15 and 30 suffering from heart inflammation with a probable link to the Pfizer vaccine. With the abundance of caution you've shown around masking, social distancing, and other health protocols this year, would it not make sense to be equally as prudent with this effort and administer vaccines at existing vaccination sites, knowing the potential liability for the school district? And finally, I've heard you are considering shifting COVID testing from teachers to children in the fall. Statistically, COVID cases are far lower than they were before students started in person, and now individuals have access to vaccines. As of today, there is one new case of COVID in Santa Barbara and no new cases in Galida.
Time.
Thank you very much. Students were not tested before, why now?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rodney Maher. Mr. Maher is also not online. I'm looking back to Ms. Gutierrez, Marisol Gutierrez is not online. And Yvette Chambers, who is also not online. So that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. And now I'll move to the board members. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, I want to thank you so much, Dr. Wagenek, and we will move on to our next agenda item. Thank you. So let's back it up. And now we will go to D1, which is the acceptance of donations for June 8th, 2021. I would like to ask if there is a motion to accept the $100,000 donation that was so generously given along with the partnership.
Except with gratitude, the donation of the $100,000.
Thank you so much. And is there a second? Ms. Munoz, thank you for your second. Board members, all in favor of accepting this donation, will you please signify by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously. And let's see, we can go on to the consent agenda. At this time, as you know, we consider items that are considered to be routine and are normally approved by a single vote of the board without separate discussion. They also have been all recommended by the superintendent and her staff. So are there any public comments first on the consent agenda, Ms. Trujillo?
No public comment.
Thank you. So board members or Dr. Maldonado, do any of you want to have further discussion or have a question about a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I will move for a vote to accept the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. And how about a second? Ms. Alvarez, thank you. So all in favor of accepting and approving the consent agenda for tonight, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda passes unanimously. Moving on. Gee, it's going to be hard to move on. So I think we should continue. We're being so good about time. Let's continue just a little bit early with the public hearing on the LCAP Plan. That is the Local Control Accountability Plan. And if I can just give a moment or two to make sure that we give Mr. Venn's time to get a microphone and the presentation up, then we can begin this public hearing.
Good evening, President Ford, board members, Dr. Maldonado. There's just three points that I would just like to just bring up before we go into public hearing. The first one is that as we've been developing the, the plan for this upcoming year, we've really been making sure that we adhere to the ED Code. And that's specifically 52060. And this is the California law addressing Local Control Accountability Plan. So we've been making sure that we adhere to that. The second one is that we've been hearing the conversations around Metta, what is Metta? And how does LCAP link to Metta? Metta really is a plan designed for emerging multilingual students. And it's, it's for all of our students within the school district. So you hear about a, a specific strategy that we're using, which is the DLI program at McKinley. That's just one component, but the whole picture is really we're addressing those students, which is about 15% or 16% of our student population, non-duplicated. The last one that I think it's really important to remember as well is that this is in line with Dr. Maldonado's presentation about the district's demographics earlier this evening. I just want to make sure that we're clear that 52% of our student population is designated as low-income. That's over half of our student population. That means that our LCAP is designed to really focus work for that student population because it's designated as one of the unduplicated students. So I just wanted to bring that up to our attention and just remind So I just wanted to bring that up to our attention and just remind everyone about that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And so with that introduction, it is now time to receive any public comments for this hearing. Mr. Hill, are there any public comments?
Thank you, President Ford. We have two public comments on this item.
Thank you.
Ms. Roseanne Crawford and Moni Dewitt. I will start with Roseanne Crawford.
Hi, this is Roseanne. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Definitely a step in the right direction for ease of interpretation. Thank you for hearing us about a lot more details. As I understand, parents' concerns are not getting specific answers in the LCAP meetings and not being allowed meaningful engagements that address their concerns. It's more like a presentation than a collaboration. Parents want more input as to where they see their needs and their needs. They are in the shoes, so to speak. They're the stakeholders. I continue to question LCAP funding being used for Metta dual-language immersion. Thank you for explaining some of these percentages and what populations they represent. But the money is being spent not only over a whole class, but school-wide, and this makes it harder to track. How, for example, is money being spent to track money spent on new programs, specifically dual immersion, and to evaluate their effectiveness? What department and who will take responsibility for tracking those details of effectiveness, such as reclassification rates after 5th grade for English proficiency? This is a big rollout, having no data. The graduation rates for this group, this challenged group, so to speak, are very sad for this designated group, all the subgroups that you define in your printout here of the 60 pages. All to spare time in the meeting, and I won't go over them, but we know all the populations. Small comment, Mr. Venz, when you do this next time, it would be very helpful. This was a 60-page document. If you could please put page numbers when you download it as a PDF, there's nothing other than draft 6221 on all 60 pages, which, if you're looking for some specific things, it gets kind of wild playing cards with 60 pages that have no numbers. So that would be greatly appreciated. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Moni Dewitt.
Hi, thank you, Sandra, and good evening, board. Yeah, so I am quite concerned about this LCAP. And two things, the process hasn't felt transparent. So what I mean by that is it's not specific enough to see if it's truly going to our most vulnerable, high-needs students. And much of the money, as mentioned before, is going district-wide. But also, aside from transparency, the parent engagement piece was just not there. I honestly wish I could tell you something different, but all the goals came from the staff. We were only allowed to reflect and, you know, kind of mirror back about those. And one of the most important things that I need you to know is we need to change our culture around literacy to get the numbers up for these subgroups. Because, you know, even though you like to say the graduation rates, when they're not the UC graduation rates and our low-income students, there's only 39.5% that graduate, you know? And students with disabilities, it's only 11% that can go straight to UCSB. So literacy and math are key. And the law under LCAP also says you have to do what's most effective. And some of these programs are interesting, but they are not evidence-based and most effective. And some literacy practices can boost all of this up. If we would do automatic testing, give everybody who needs it tutoring, which we're not even doing this summer, only 350 kids with a disability gets it, we should be calling them all differences. And so we're doing too little too late. And we're spending it, we're taking from Peter, stealing from Peter to pay Paul. This should only go to these kids. And I look at the data and our campuses, and some campuses are just failing, you know, to teach our kids 12% proficiency at places like Cleveland. You know, this just is, I feel like it's a human rights issue. I really am passionate about it. And I wasn't able to discuss this, even though I went to five meetings. I mean, I was allowed to say the words, but no discussion, which where I mean is somebody actually talks back to you, and then maybe you do that a couple of times. And as much as I've wanted to talk to someone and have put myself out there, I have yet to have a true discussion about something, besides one or two board members outside, about literacy. And I have a lot to share, and we need to change this. Our kids are suffering. Their scores are painful, and they get pushed out of school, and they go to juvenile hall. I'm on the restirring committee for that. And you know what? Look at, look at the photographer, Richard Ross. All the kids in juvie, they've got special needs that weren't met. Our district is failing these kids, and I'm not going to stand by and let it happen. Don't pass the LCAP like this. It needs to be tweaked. And we need to see that these kids are getting their intensive interventions on time. It's not right, and I really would like a response, and I'd like to see action. We have an action gap. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. Then that will close the hearing on the LCAP plan or the LCAP. Thank you so much, Mr. Venz. And now I'd also like to just go back to Ms. Trujillo. We have one more speaker on the COVID-19 report.
Thank you, President Ford. We have Dani Piola.
Hi, thank you for coming back and allowing me to speak. I mailed out the boards this weekend asking for the science on the mask that they work. I got few answers, and I asked them to send me the science because I want to see. I haven't seen this before, the science, because as far as I know, they do not work. And I have a daughter with anxiety, depression, and every time she has to put a mask, she says, Mom, I cannot breathe. She's 15. And she failed. She failed Zoom. She went back to school, and she did not like it. She hated it. She lost her passion for learning, and she has anxiety. And she said, I don't want to go back to school wearing this mask. So I kept her on Zoom, and she completely failed. And I see your mission statement there, that you're preparing the students for the mission statement. I think, I feel like I can read it, right? We prepare students for a world that is yet to be created. And I'm sorry, but I think you're failing my daughter because she is failing. She's not getting prepared. She has anxiety. She cannot go to school with that mask because it affects her mental and health. I cried. I had my daughter crying to me and say, Mom, I just want to sleep and cry. Okay, and that's really affecting her. She has the therapies. She has, we're having a really hard time. And I'm really worried that comes again next year, and she neither has to be vaccinated or wear masks or now testing, which I do not agree either. And I think I came to this country from Brazil for the freedom, for the American dream, and I feel I'm losing, I don't have the American dream, and I'm losing my freedom and my choices. I cannot choose my client, my daughter, to wear a mask or not. I know there is parents that think that protecting their kids is okay. I understand. And they can choose to send their kids with school with the mask. But I cannot send my daughter with extremely anxiety with the mask when she doesn't have the, when she wants to panic. She went to the office and asked to come home. Okay, and then, and I asked for the science. I said, just show me the science. And I have not received one email with the science. I was guided where I can look it, but if you were applying the mask, it would be easy for you to show the science. You can show in the slide right now to me where is the science that proves that the mask works. And I will have a lot of data of kids being affected mentally, healthy, physically, because of this mask. And I do not agree. And I also do not agree with the pressure to be vaccinated either. So I think it's my choice. And I think if you have a mission statement preparing the students for the world to be created, they should not be afraid or anxious or terrified to go to school. And I don't need to complete my time. I think I've said enough. And if someone can please send me the science, because if the science is out there I should have the science already after these three days. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Ford, with your permission, we have one more parent that just joined in regards to COVID report.
That will be fine.
Rodney Maher. Mr. Maher, are you?
This is Rodney Maher. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead. Ms. Maher, we are not able to hear you. Are you still there? I think she was having internet issues.
That are concerning and specifically addressing the childhood vaccines. It's pretty ironic, but it seems to me that the most reliable place to review the scientific literature is actually from the literature generated by the pharmaceutical companies. They're required to produce certain documents by the FDA, and I wanted to bring those to the attention of the board. If you are listening, you can type in to your Google search FDA briefing document, and you can indicate the name of the manufacturer. So you can write FDA briefing document, Moderna, for example. What I want to direct your attention to is the gaps. They're called data gaps in the scientific studies that these diff-
Ms. Maher, are you still there? Can't hear you. We can't hear you. I think we have lost her.
Are you sure?
She still shows online, but there's no sound.
True, there's no sound. Ms. Maher, can you hear us?
She just dropped. So, yeah, that concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. Dr. Maldonado and Dr. Wagonick, I wonder if you'd consider one favor from me? And that would be that there would be some sort of parent communication going out on two items. One is the contact information to California Department of Public Health about the science regarding masks, social distancing of children, et cetera, and also ways to access mental health resources for children over the summer. Thank you so much. With that, we can now, board members, move to the action. Oh, please, Ms. Alvarez.
I do have a question about the LCAP. And I, sorry, I thought the board was going to have an opportunity to have comments after the hearing.
Usually, that's not the case with hearings. This is a public hearing.
When does the board have an opportunity to have a comment about the LCAP?
We should have an opportunity when it is up for an approval, a vote at the next board meeting.
The next board meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll save my comments for that.
Thanks. I'm sorry. We didn't make that clear.
That's fine. Thank you.
Great. Then let's move on to the action agenda, and there are five items for-
Yeah. The budget hearing?
Oh, oh, that's right. We've got the public. But that wasn't till- Yes, I know, but it's not scheduled till 8 a.m., 8 p.m. So that's why I'm- We're really early. So that's why I'm going forward, charge forward. But I am going to miss Chetay because action item number one is the approval of- I know. You expect us to be behind. Our approval of the agreement with Cooperative Strategies LLC and Santa Barbara Unified School District for converting from an at-large to a bi-trusty area voting district. Ms. Chetay?
Thank you, President Ford, board members, and Superintendent Maldonado. Public agencies, including school districts, conduct elections for their governing board either through an at-large or bi-trusty area voting. In the at-large system used by SB Unified, governing boards are elected to, by all of the voters in the district, and each voter may cast one vote for each open seat. By the trustee area system, the agency is divided into separate trustee areas, and each voter may only vote for a candidate from the trustee area the voters reside in. We need a company to do this evaluation for us, and we evaluated five contracts that could provide us with this service. And we concluded that cooperative strategy was the right one for our district. They will look at the natural boundaries, the census data that will be coming out in mid-August, and consider the district should, if the district should increase the number of trustees from five to seven. Also, the board passed a resolution in June of 2018 to have Santa Barbara stated that the trustee area boundary line shall be developed to provide the elections by trustee areas for its elections in 2022. So I'm here to ask for your recommend, or provide a recommendation that we approve the Cooperative Strategy LLC contract for the bi-trusty area voting for the district. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Chetay. Mr. Hill, are there any public comments on this item?
Yes, President Ford, we have two public comments on this item. Sheridan Rosenberg and Alice Post. Sheridan Rosenberg?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, I had a question, and I know that you're not necessarily going to be able to answer it. But for something like this, when I see something like this on the agenda, I think it would really be in the public's best interest if perhaps, anytime it involves districting and voting and something as important as this, of having perhaps a special board meeting for the public where there's more of an opportunity to engage the public, to explain what the differences are, show charts and graphs, show what the ramifications are, show what the impact is for the community, and invite our input. Because honestly, I'm not an expert in this, and I just found it confusing. And I would really invite all of you in an effort to be more transparent and to educate the public, because again, I'm not familiar with this. Most of us aren't. But I can imagine that changing something as important as this, is how things are districted, how people vote, and adding more board members to this school board is really something that I think warrants more public input. And I'm not necessarily opposed to a study, but what I support is more transparency and educating and having, inviting more public participation. Because I would love to participate in even a seminar on this to understand what's at stake and to certainly have a voice in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alice Post. Ms. Post is not online. And that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. So, board members, at this time, now that we've had the introduction to the item and also an opportunity for public comments, do you have any questions or comments before we take the vote to approve this contract? Ms. Capps?
Thank you, and thanks for bringing this forward. I know that we passed a resolution in 2018 that said that we would do this after the community, some community members brought this forward as a concept and as something that they were advocating strongly for, and I'm certainly interested in exploring it. And like the public speaker, you know, the point of the study is that we don't know much about it. And that's a way, starting now, if we approve this consultant, to come back and have public attention. And certainly, it would be my expectation, I understand, I imagine it would be yours as well, that we'd have lots of public engagement on something that has such widespread ramifications and involves literally over 100,000 voters. So with that, I just am asking, because we are at this juncture, what is this consultant, or how is this consultant chosen? Because again, this is not something that's familiar to me of how you go do this. And if I missed it, I apologize. And if I missed it, I apologize. Is there a timeframe involved?
Yep. Yes, there is. So what we did is we, I reviewed five contractors. I just did a spreadsheet and compared apples, tried to get apples to apples.
Sure.
And the cost, of course, and what they were going to provide, all the way to the very end. So that's what I was looking for from start to finish. To answer the question about the community input, that was a big one of our requests when I sent out the email that we wanted community support. So to answer our caller's question is that that will be a huge part of this.
Sure.
Once they get the census data and they get the basic information of Santa Barbara at boundaries, they will start to have public hearings, and they will educate the people on what this actually means for the district. We may or may not increase the board members. That's what we're going to, this is what, all the information we're trying to gather. What is the best solution for our area?
Excellent. So the timeframe roughly, yep.
You did ask about the timeframe. So as soon as the contract is done, they will start researching the district and the boundaries and the natural boundaries, the mountains, the, you know, just natural boundaries, freeways, things like that. And then they start to go into, once the census data is available mid-August, they're hoping mid-August, then they'll start doing that initial of areas, different kinds of areas. And they're going to, they will try to make each one of the areas equal in size, equal in population. There's no political move here to make it all Republican here and Democrat here. So all of those things are considered, and that's what we're paying them for, is to get the balance in our district.
Excellent. And I know that obviously the city went through this not too long ago. Is this, is this, did this firm do that process, or?
We reviewed that process, and I did talk to Paul Casey at the city.
Great.
The one, the Cooperative Strategies does a lot of districts. A lot of the other ones did cities and counties and things like that. But these guys really focus on the school districts, and they're international, or they're national.
Yeah, I noticed it on their website. So I just, well, I'm glad you're in touch with the city manager. I just would encourage as much of lessons learned from that process that we could benefit from here in our school district. Again, just as an opportunity to state publicly, we have, it's a massive district in terms of the amount of voters. And over 100, and those of us who just ran know this number, over 112,000 voters. And so again, this impacts a lot of households, a lot of families, a lot of people. And just to reiterate for those who are potentially, you know, interested in this, as I am greatly, this is just the beginning, like the very beginning of the process. Now that we, or soon we'll have the census data, and that's the resolution that we passed in 2018, is to, of course, makes more sense to have accurate data rather than dated data. And so that's why we're moving forward now, and I'm excited to see this take off. Thanks.
Ms. Capps, if I could just add a couple more things. I was lucky enough to attend a presentation about this issue that was created and presented by Craig Price, our district legal counsel. And it was fantastic. I've asked Dr. Maldonado to be sure that he does that for us, so all five of us understand what's involved here. And in particular, to answer your question, I found it very interesting that from the time this contract begins, it is this analysis of all the data that Ms. Chate mentioned, and then a process of negotiation. So listening to the community, listening to the board, going back and possibly redrawing those lines, coming back with another idea, coming, and so it can go back and forth for some time. But as you know, we have to have this completed and ready to go and out to our community in a very short amount of time in order to do a good job on the 2022 election for school board members, which affects Ms. Munoz and me. Any other comments or questions from board members? Ms. Alvarez?
Well, first of all, thank you, Ms. Chate for your thorough work. And I know they've done work for other districts. Did you have an opportunity to speak to any members of other districts as far as if they're happy with their performance, with the reports that they received?
Yes, a lot of districts are in the same situation we are right now, that they're just starting, right? They've signed contracts with this company. I did email about four districts. I have gotten no response back from any of the districts, but I will continue to do that, absolutely. But some of the quotes in their contract were very good. And I've heard through the grapevine that other people are really happy with them so far, and they've been engaged with them maybe over a month or two.
Thank you. I've heard good things about them as well. So thank you for doing this work.
Yes, Ms. Simms-Mouten?
Yeah, I just echo all the comments, and would be interesting to hear Craig present to us. That would be really good. It must be the time for this. Isn't the county going through redistricting as well? So it's a time, this is not a firm that they're doing, so we're all kind of looking at the same process.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Munoz?
Yes, also not to be, you know, not to repeat what my sister board members are stating. I'd also be, and thank you for sharing with us about Craig Price's presentation. And I appreciate Meg today doing the research on this and selecting, you know, presenting in front of us a company that you think is about, you know, going to do a good job. I certainly, I attended many of the city hearings when they were looking at district elections and learned a lot as to how much the community input made a difference, how they kept changing this and that to make sure about representation. So I certainly, you know, in terms of the public comments, want to reassure, you know, that this will be a process in terms of communication, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no further comments. So, board members, I wonder if I could entertain a motion to approve this contract, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. And a second. Ms. Alvarez, wonderful. So all in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion to approve this contract passes unanimously. And Dr. Maldonado, you did have a good instinct that I might have skipped over something, and I did skip over public comment on non-agenda items. So that is C7. And we have some speakers that we should be able to tuck in before the 8:00 PM second hearing. So, Ms. Trujillo, could you begin with those speakers?
Thank you, President Ford. We have eight speakers for this item. I will name them all. Alfred Pomerlau, Barbara Battistini, Margarita Mendoza, Danny Piola, Roseanne Crawford, Peggy Wilson, Jamie Davin, and Moni Duit. I will begin with Alfred Pomerlau.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. I want to actually talk, attach something to what was spoken of the COVID-19. And that's an alternative approach to the present narrative that is being used in regards to how to deal with COVID-19. So one of the primary roles of school systems is to educate individuals, students, young children, how to take care of themselves, how to take care of their health, and practice well-being. And we have seen that children who do this then bring it home and share with their parents. And so it's also true for the whole community. I'm a doctor of Asian medicine. One of the many strengths of Asian medicine is being able to see imbalances in the body before disease actually sets in. The system we use to achieve this is both scientific and a bit of an art. But what it creates is a person's system strong enough to resist disease, to resist infections, et cetera. This brings up one of my favorite titles of a book about cancer. Its title is Prevention Your Cancer is Never Getting In. That's the principle that I'm talking about. So having a strong system is the best way to defend or prevent any disease. In the case of an infection of any pathogenic microorganism like COVID-19, we need to create and maintain a strong immunity. People who are vulnerable to COVID-19 or any pathogenic organisms like influenza and pneumonia are the ones who are the most vulnerable to these organisms. They have a compromised immunity. For the most part, people in Santa Barbara already know how to get healthy and maintain themselves at a high level of wellness. So what I'm going to share with you is not information that is foreign. What is needed? Well, we need a good nutritional substrate, the building blocks to create a healthy organism. We need to exercise regularly, breathe deeply, take in fresh, pure air, and exhale the turbine, the CO2, et cetera. And we need to have the right attitude. We need to be emotionally and feel emotionally and spiritually supported by our peers, by the adults that surround us. And we need to do this for our children and keep practicing this so they can model it in turn. So I believe this is what is really needed for us all to create a better, healthy community and children. And it was really wonderful to hear the dream that the young lady spoke of at the very beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Battistini.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Maldonado. My message tonight is not very pleasant because the curriculum of teen talk is not very pleasant. It is offensive, and it hurts children. It hurts families. And most parents are not aware that it is now being taught in our Santa Barbara School District at the junior high level. On September 8th, 2020, the Santa Barbara Unified School District voted in teen talk to read that chosen government curriculum to be taught to junior high students during COVID. It was voted on during COVID. The board completely ignored 1,000 voices that contended for teen talk to be rejected coming from Santa Barbara, parents, teachers, community. This is old news, but let me remind you why the guardians of children in this community did not want teen talk. It is highly graphic and sexually charged. It is pornographic, and we showed you all of those examples. Teen talk is medically inaccurate and exposes children to dangerous and sexually, and sexual activity that could be permanently, that could permanently damage their bodies. And we brought doctors to verify that. Teen talk teaches many ways for children to have sex, including mouth-to-anal, and normalizes and encourages a whole new level of sexual experimentation. How can this be good for children? Teen talk teaches children to go behind their parents' back. This puts teachers in the driver's seat and breaks down the child-parent relationship of trust. Teen talk teaches children to ask sex from each other and calls it negotiation skills. This is consent of sex between minors, and it is illegal. This is being taught to 12-year-old boys and girls. Teen talk indoctrinates our children with gender theory that contradicts science and leaves children considering that they may be in their wrong bodies. This is a deterioration of their very soul, leading to suicide, depression, self-loathing, and eventually for some mutilation of their bodies. Teen talk instructs children at age 12 to go to Planned Parenthood clinics for abortions behind the parents' back. Planned Parenthood has a great investment in these children because it has money in their pocket. We protest at Santa Barbara Unified School District, did not listen to our community, and we want to know why. What is the relationship you have with Planned Parenthood? Who will, will you be held accountable? Or are you above the law? Why did you make an agreement with Planned Parenthood a few months to provide trained back, to provide trained health educators to present their sex education to our high school campuses? This happened during COVID, and I had, I had to look so deep to find that E6 or 7 or whatever that was. It was hidden. It was in your agenda. So parents didn't even know this was happening. And I know for a fact that Planned Parenthood, that is the choice a district creates.
Time, thank you. Our next speaker is Margarita Mendoza. Es nuestra próxima persona?
Buenas noches. Buenas noches al consejo escolar. Y al público soy Margarita. Yo estoy a favor de meta y la enseñanza doble inmersión lingüística. De LI en la escuela primaria Macallan. Mi comentario es muy simple. Sé que esta enseñanza será beneficiosa para todos los estudiantes. No solo para estudiantes latinos, para todos los estudiantes. Es doble aprendizaje, doble oportunidad, y doble conocimiento. ¿Por qué digo esto? Porque sé que alrededor del mundo estudiantes internacionales buscan oportunidades para estudiar un segundo, tercero, hasta quinto lenguaje. El multilingüismo está siendo muy necesario y demandante. Así que si ahora pensamos que nuestros estudiantes no necesitan aprender a leer y a escribir en español, debemos pensar inteligente y apoyar esta oportunidad que nuestro distrito de Santa Barbara nos otorga. Gracias, buenas noches.
Gracias. President Ford, should we continue?
Ms. Trujillo, could we suspend these public comments and move to our public hearing on the proposed budget for 2021, 2022? This hearing comes to order. Ms. Chate?
Thank you again, President Ford. This budget is the summary of the estimated actuals for 2020, '21 and the 2021, '22 adopted budget. However, I'll be focusing on the 2021, '22 fiscal year. This budget includes estimated revenues for both restricted and unrestricted. It also includes the amounts of funds we will receive in both federal and state relief funds. For transparency, we have separated the property taxes, or what we call our LCFF funding, from the funds that have been budgeted for the LCAP for both the current year and the next fiscal year. Now that we are community-funded, districts do not receive additional funds for LCAP. However, we are required to allocate a designated amount for our property taxes, our property tax revenue. You can see the normal, the amount allocated to the LCAP on line 2A in your packet. I'm not sure that it has the slide in it. It doesn't have the slide, does it? We'll get to this one. So the 2021 adopted fully, budget fully supports the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan. And I want to mention a few of the expenses on the salary and benefit line that, because it is the greatest expense in our budget. The following are included in the 2021 adopted budget. There are three elementary assistant principals, one K8 assistant principal, the sustainability position, the negotiation salary increase for the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, confidential and management. What is not in the budget is the CSCE settlement, which we are hoping to conclude negotiations within the next couple of weeks. Next slide, please. Want to also mention that, and we'll talk about this in a minute, but I also want to mention that the positions that are funded in the state and federal relief funds are only for one year. And then the positions will be evaluated at the end of each year to determine their impact on students. So you can see from this slide that it shows on the 2020 year that our total LCFF funds, which are mostly our property taxes, is 75% of our total budget. The LCAP funds are in the green, which is 12.8 million, and it's about 6%. So it's a small portion of our budget, but we are out, we are mandated to report out the plan and to make sure that the budget supports the plan. Next slide, please. So one more thing- So one more thing that I want to mention is that we are, the district has planned to deficit spend 8.5 million. The deficit reduces our ending fund balance to 10.7 million. 7.1 million is on the unrestricted side of the budget, which is where most of our staff are allocated, which is above the 3% reserve we're required to have. The special reserve is also included in the fund balance of 14 million for our reserve account. And that brings us to a 10.10% reserve of unrestricted funds, which is 7% higher than the state recommended reserve of 3%. I just want to reiterate that the adopted budget fully supports the LCAP. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thanks. Before we go to public comments, Ms. Jete, just wanted to confirm that you will be bringing this budget for discussion and approval to the board on what date?
On June 22nd.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments on the proposed budget for 2021, 22?
Thank you, President Ford. We have one request. Moni Duet.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm not very good with numbers, but I do have a request. I was wondering if it's possible to see what the district is spending on students with learning differences. And I was also wondering if we can see a budget for each site or, you know, maybe somebody can just email me privately, but yeah, so that these numbers are more tangible and we can really see where the money is going. And I was just wondering if that's available because it's very hard for me to see what's if students' needs are being met when I look at this. So make it a little bit more meaningful to someone like me. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the introduction, Ms. Jete. Board members, we have some homework to do and lots of things to continue, to consider on and before June 22nd. With that, I would like to conclude this hearing on the proposed budget and continue on with public comments from non-agendized items. Ms. Trujillo.
Thank you, President Ford. I will name our remaining five speakers. Dani Piola, Roseanne Crawford, Peggy Wilson, Jamie Davin, and Moni Duet. I will start with Dani Piola.
Thank you for letting me speak again. And my question now is I saw that we went to yellow attire and I have my kids in public school for a while and, you know, I trusted and I had faith that I was sending them to a very good and safe place. So I never got that much involved. And now I regret it and I think I failed a little bit as a parent when I didn't get myself involved because I had the faith that I was a really good and safe place for them. And I feel I feel now that I need to get to fight for some rights here. And I would like to do in person. And I saw at the beginning of the meeting that it had people in person there. And I'm wondering when that's going to happen because I'm aware that there is other school boards in California that that are letting parents to be in person, like Conejo Valley or something. And I would love to be able to attend a meeting in person. So I just want to know if, when would that be possible since we are in yellow tire, no cases, and a big majority vaccinated, I don't think we have much risk anymore of catching COVID. And I think would be really, I would appreciate as other parents if we could attend these meetings in person so we can really talk about our kids and what we think is right. Because I see that we can, we are able now to choose sexes, you know, we can choose if a boy or girl. So I think my kids, I have the right to choose what is right or wrong for my kids. And I think I, you know, I have that right to choose and I really want to do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roseanne Crawford. Ms. Crawford, can you hear us? Ms. Crawford, can you unmute yourself, please? And I hear that response. I'll loop back to Ms. Roseanne Crawford. Now go to Jamie Davin. Davin is no longer online. Our next speaker is Moni Duet.
Oh, my God.
Thanks so much, Sandra. Yeah, actually, I briefly just want to say about the mask thing. I did see Fauci's interview and he said that masks are great and have reduced a lot of respiratory disease in this country, incidentally, and we saved a lot of lives that way. So I would just like to say to a lot of parents out there, consider the common good. They do it in countries like Japan. And, you know, be a good example to your kids and your kids will will listen. But anyway, what other thing I wanted to ask the board was to please consider having a FICMAT report done because we have 38.5 million from the CARES Fund. And I think a FICMAT would be, which is an audit for the people who might not know. And it's the people come in and they basically analyze everything about your district and you get some really great feedback. And what I like about it is that it's independent and and it does point to the weaknesses and many times it has been for students with differences get hit the hardest. So I think we haven't had one. And I think would be very unifying force because we see that some of these students fall through the cracks and even for, you know, the summer tutoring program, we could have each one of them be offered that. And these are the kind of things a FICMAT report might recommend. And they certainly will tell us in an unbiased and professional manner what we need to do. So I would really greatly appreciate if the board would consider doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Roseanne Crawford. Ms. Crawford, can you hear us? One moment. Ms. Roseanne Crawford, can you hear us? Roseanne Crawford, can you hear us? No response. And that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. With that, Board members, I'd like to return to the action agenda item. Number two, this is the approval of the contract with the University of Kansas Center for Research, Inc., Schoolwide Integrated Framework for Transformation, also known SWIFT, the Education Center, and Santa Barbara Unified School District. This item goes to Dr. Wagonick.
Right. Good evening again, President Ford, Superintendent Maldonado, and Board members. So Santa Barbara Unified, we can go to the next slide. Thank you. Santa Barbara Unified School District has been working to launch a multi-tiered system of support since the 2018, 19 school year as a response to disproportionate academic and behavioral outcomes for students of color, students with disabilities, emerging, emerging multilingual learners and students living in poverty. The urgency to complete this system-wide implementation of MTSS was increased in early 2020, just prior to the pandemic, when we were informed that the district had been identified as having significant disproportionality in the identification of students for special education under the qualifying category of specific learning disability. Now, knowing that an effective implementation of MTSS frameworks would require coaching and consultation and professional learning from an outside consultant, we began researching our options. And we sought and received proposals from three different organizations, the American Institute of Research, SWIFT out of the University of Kansas, the SWIFT Education Center, and West Ed. So the cost of contracting with the other two organization was less than that of contracting with SWIFT Education Center. Those other two organizations came up short, really when it comes to meeting several of the key characteristics we're seeking in a consultant. Next slide, please. So we ultimately landed on SWIFT Education Center because we saw that this organization has the proven ability, ability to coach us through this second-order transformational change. There's no really, I can't underscore enough what a needed but large change. So they have the proven ability to coach us through that. And and especially in a district of our size and our characteristics. So now let me speak to the scope of the work that SWIFT has proposed. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before, SWIFT is actually the University of Kansas's framework, the SWIFT framework, and that is based in equity and inclusion and really focuses on the individual, each individual student. And it is, it is focused on transforming districts. In addition, SWIFT will be meeting with district and school leadership teams time and time again over the next three years to facilitate effective installation of evidence-based practices that are needed. They will provide professional learning essentials so that we can effectively implement MTSS at our schools. And and I know this is something very important to the board and it's important to us is a very robust evaluation of the implementation to ensure fidelity. That's both internal evaluation and external evaluation. So let me talk a bit about SWIFT framework. Again, it's an equity-based framework, taking a transformational approach. Another area that we were very impressed by was their ability to respond with flexibility to our changing and evolving priorities, anything that may come up. I don't think we can underscore enough that working directly with a major university who that does research and evaluation is helpful as well. They'll be working with school leaders, school leadership teams, district leadership team. They'll do coaching regularly with our principals and their school leadership teams and also conduct quarterly planning and support meetings. In all, in year one, there will be at least 135 distinct coaching sessions, professional learning or trainings that will take place. And then last, I want to touch on what we can expect in terms of that evaluation piece. The first is the fidelity implementation tool. SWIFT will be working with the first nine school sites to have them conduct their own implementation tool. And then at the end of the year, and that happens at the beginning of the year and more towards the end of the year. So twice a year, they do the fit. And then the fidelity integrity assessment, SWIFT education actually comes in and does their own external evaluation. They also debrief the schools on the results, work with the schools. And of course, we'll be bringing this this evaluation to the board. And they're also going to do, because we decided, we had an option of rolling out to our 18 schools over three years or two years. And the decision was to do it over two years because of the urgency and we feel like it's time to go. And so what they'll be doing in year one is doing a baseline and a comparison group and looking at data of the of the implementation group one and then the non-implementation group. Next slide, please. So each school will go through a process of introduction and introduction to MTSS, installation of the multi-tiered system of support, the implementation fully, and then finally, a phase of sustaining that work. Our first cohort is still, we're still rounding it out, but it will include our three schools who have been identified for significant disproportionality that are Cleveland, Monroe, and Franklin. It will also include Santa Barbara Junior High School, Santa Barbara High School, Santa Barbara Community Academy, and Lacumbre. And then we are making our decision on the last two schools to fill out for work one. We'll also have a district leadership piece. And really, for those of us on the district leadership team, the focus will be on capacity building so that we can continue the leadership of MTSS once SWIFT has moved on after year three. Next slide. So the funding for these services will come from the SRTU and the in-person instruction grant. The three-year total cost is $1,066,500. And now I will open it up for questions and discussion.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wagonick. Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments on this item first?
Thank you, President Ford. Yes, we do have one comment on this item. And Ms. Sheridan Rosenberg.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. So I actually, I just don't even know where to begin. So I, you know, I don't have to be an expert to sort of peruse the internet and say this is for social emotional behavior interventions. And so for a million dollars, I'm wondering, why are you implementing this before you do a FICMAT audit? You're long overdue for a FICMAT audit. And I would wager money personally that a lot of the behavior problems are coming from children who are not getting their needs met immediately, early on, starting in kindergarten, who are not getting properly evaluated, who are not getting English language learning intervention, who, if they have learning differences, are not being properly evaluated immediately, that parents have to beg for these evaluations, sometimes for years, rather than spend money on this, I'm sorry, woke-de-woke crap. Why aren't you focusing on common sense literacy and math and early intervention with testing and evaluating kids and focusing on their on their individual needs? A million dollars, in my opinion, would help a lot of kids right out of the gate. Because by third grade, we know that it's not impossible, but it's more difficult. I think a lot of families need help with the basics, with the common sense basics that you're actually required to do by law. And instead, I'm looking at this, at more research coming out of a university from another state who are going to come in and talk about social emotional needs, rather than maybe entertaining the idea that a lot of these kids are bored, have low self-esteem, feel disenfranchised, completely lost in the shuffle and disconnected because they can't read, because they're struggling with language or with math. That should be your top priority. And instead, I see that you grasp desperately at these straws, at these fads, if you will. And instead, I see that you grasp desperately at these straws, at these fads, if you will. And I don't think it's solving any problems. But first of all, you should not fund this. You should not pay one penny for this until and unless you do a FICMAT audit, state-of-California FICMAT audit. You absolutely are overdue for that. And I mean, a top-to-bottom audit. And you know, as far as I'm concerned, Virginia Alvarez, this is your wheelhouse. You understand how money should be spent. Why aren't you pushing for a FICMAT audit? This is something that you understand needs to be done. So I would really encourage you to table this. Do not fund it. A million dollars is a lot of money, you know, and I don't think that's the best use of those funds to get kids caught up. God knows, I don't even know if we can evaluate the damage that's been done from the remote learning, not being in personal, face-to-face learning.
Time, thank you. And that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Hugh. Board members, now I'll open it up to you. Do you have further questions or comments about this proposed contract? Please, Ms. Alvarez.
Thank you, Dr. Wagenek, and thank you for answering all my questions ahead of time. I appreciate that. I do have one more clarification, clarifying question, is if we find that we are not a match with this vendor, this provider, I mean, going into three-year contract, it's a lot of time. If by the end of the first year, we find that this is not what we were looking for, but we were expecting, what are, what is our, are we going to be able to cancel the contract? What is it? Do we have an exit clause?
We do have an exit clause that can occur in, so I believe it's a 30-day exit clause. Is that true? Written, a 30-day written exit clause. So we don't even have to wait until the end of the first year. We can do it earlier than that.
Okay. And then Ms. Jete, would you please remind me and clarify this about the use of these monies? What are the restrictions for us to use these monies, these ESER funds, and the deadlines to use it?
Depending on which ESER it's in, if it's one or two, or two or three, sorry, it's a two-year for one, two, two-year for two, three-year for three, ESER three. The, it's to help our subgroups, our unduplicated foster homeless. Mental health can be used, that it's a wide variety of items that we can use it on. The money can be spent in numerous ways.
And this is one of the ways that we can spend it.
That's correct.
And to your knowledge, are we able to extend this deadlines? Could we request for a waiver if we don't spend the money within the guidelines, within the timeframe?
I guess we could, but I don't remember a waiver being presented on either one of these ESER twos or three.
Okay, thank you. So we need to spend them within that time period?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Sims-Mouton, please.
Yes, so Ms. Alvarez, you asked those questions I was going to ask, but I do have one more question, so thank you. So on the slide, that's the scope of work. So in 21, 22, Cohort Warant One, that's when we start with Cohort One, and then we, Cohort One in 22, 23, they continue on. But does Cohort Two continue on somewhere? Am I missing that or we'd have to?
The way it was, well, so Cohort Two will do what Cohort One did in 22, 23, but they'll do it in 23, 24. I could have been clearer in spelling that out. And then Cohort One will continue to do professional learning and coaching as needed while Cohort Two is completing the continued implementation and evaluation. And by that point, with the district leadership building our own capacity to sustain all of our schools and do the supporting, then we'll bring Cohort Two on home. You know, that's really, that 23, 24 is the year where SWIFT kind of takes the training wheels off the bike.
And then we start.
And we start riding on our own.
So it's building the capacity to sustain, I see that. So, and then just one more question with regards to, just lost my train of thought. Need something to build my sustainability too. Just completely lost my train of thought. I was just trying to think of a question. Oh, I know it was. So if, let's say, the 31st day, is 30 days enough time to really determine, do we need to terminate the contract or not? Or do, is there, can we terminate at any point, but at least you have to let them know in 30 days?
Thank you. Yes, the contract can be terminated within 30, in 30 days. So if you're a year and a half, you give 30-day notice, 30 days later, you're done.
Okay, so you can give the notice. So you're not restricted with the first 30 days? Okay, I was going to say, that's not enough time. But okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Munoz.
Yes, I appreciate the presentation, you know, the thoroughness of it, Dr. Wagenek, in terms of how you explained it. And then also, Mr. Tay, in terms of the safeguard, you know, and if we're not satisfied with what they're doing. And as we know, like the academic, you know, academics of the students at these schools are of very much concern. So I think that, you know, this is something that I'm certainly in favor of, and I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to see that we make a difference in terms of bringing up our achievement with our students and the schools that you named.
Right, thank you. I believe very thoroughly, obviously, that this is going to, because of the focus on academics and behavior within a multi-tiered system of support, that we will see the results that the board and all of us are looking for.
Exactly, yes, in terms of, you know, what we can do so that the students get positive feedback, the staff has the right training, and then that we're able to do this on our own as a district. It's a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Then I'll just add one more comment, please, Dr. Wagenek. I thought that you expressed the need and the ways that SWIFT can help us very, very well, and I thank you for that. I'm especially excited, as other board members have mentioned, about building capacity. It's just so important and something we're always trying to do as the school district. I am really excited and in the spirit of transparency and also involvement of the board in this and not micromanagement, I'm just wondering if you'll consider bringing a SWIFT consultant to talk to the board at some point about what they're noticing and what they're seeing and update us.
Absolutely, and I did talk with them. They are in Kansas, and so it's 10:30 PM there. They were willing if we needed it, and I said that I would ask the board if, I thought there would be time in the future to have them and have them come talk to the board. So absolutely, we'll arrange that.
Thanks. I am not questioning your decision to recommend this contract, only that we get to know them too over time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So thank you so much. With that, board members, I'd like to ask you, since we completed the presentation and the comments and questions, if I may have a motion to approve item number two, the approval of the contract with the University of Kansas Center for Research, SWIFT Education Center, and Santa Barbara Unified School District. Thank you, Ms. Munoz. And is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sims-Mouton. So with the first and the second, now I'd like to ask for your approval. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. And with that, now we will take our break. This board has been working since 5:15. We'll take a 10-minute break. Mr. Rouse, if you could start the countdown clock so we'll stay really focused and start the summer learning report at 8:45. Thank you. Our second regular report, which is the Summer Learning Institute for both our teachers and our students. I know it's ready to go, so I'll turn this over to Dr. Maldonado.
Thank you so much, and I want to just reiterate how thankful I am to Sierra Lockridge and Ann Roundy Harder, who have done so much work to get all this work organized, and I'll just turn it over right quickly to them so we can be efficient with our time use. Ladies, please take it over.
Well, good evening, President Ford, board members, and Dr. Maldonado. We are so excited to share some updates with you. We just kicked off our Summer Institute Equity in Action, Our Students Are Future, yesterday. It feels like it's a week ago already because we've been so hard at work and there's so much going on, and I know Sierra is going to tell you a little bit more about that at the end of our presentation. But we had over 400 certificated staff members at San Marcos High yesterday and today, and it was just so exciting to hear the conversations and the collaboration that was happening with our staff members as we actively engaged with our themes. Can we see the next slide, please? Just to remind us, we are definitely working with our district themes around equity and accountability, supporting our educators to be culturally responsive, supporting their wellness, as we focused on that yesterday with Dr. Rios, and really looking at how we can make some substantive, long-term change. But right now, we're going to focus on the summer of learning, so we'll be coming back to our Summer Institutes. This is just a little amuse-bouche, if you will, to start off the meal. So next slide, please. Really excited to share with you that we have a lot of students signing up for summer school. So we have, at this point, over 2,800 students who have enrolled in our summer school programs. And as you can see from this slide, they are at all levels, from our little ones, our preschool students, all the way up through students who may now be adults, 18-year-olds, seniors who are taking classes. It's just really gratifying, and I want to say that many, many people have been hard at work on this, including our newly hired summer school elementary coordinators and admins, our APs at the high schools, classified staff members who work behind the scenes and are often unsung but so important in what we do, to counselors who are reaching out to families. So next slide, let's talk a little bit about that outreach. I know that was something really important to the board, and it should be. So we've engaged in many layers of outreach to make sure that we get these good numbers for summer school, and I want to emphasize that these numbers will continue to grow. So these were numbers as of last Friday, and we know that there's still outreach happening this week. So by our next board meeting, we can give you another update in terms of how many students actually showed up to our summer of learning. But outreach efforts have included paper invitations, parent squares, personalized phone calls, and I wanted to share in particular one example as I was talking to one of our junior high school coordinators. And she said, we invited 347 targeted students, meaning these were students that were identified by looking at the data. So they sent an initial invitation to highest priority need students, then a second invitation to another tier of students, and then a third invitation to yet another layer of students who could benefit but maybe weren't of the initial highest need. And they were looking at the students regarding their needs based on an ETS data query that we ran around how the students were doing, and we really focused in on ELA and math because, of course, we know how crucial those are. And we looked at things like teacher referral as well, and for our students with IEPs, we looked at what their status was and whether, wanted to make sure that their needs were getting met. And then they followed up with reminders and additional layers of phone calls, and that work is continuing through this week as well. So just many, many thanks to all of our summer school coordination team members at the sites as well as the district office. And you asked about incentives, and this is a really fun part to share with you. We have been ordering lots of really cool supplies and incentives for our students, and you can see here some of them. As a former English teacher, I was quite happy to see that there were books that were being ordered, some novels, and also some nonfiction items such as a mindfulness journal, which helps students self-reflect around social-emotional needs, set priorities, look at organizational skills, and so on. Of course, we also know that experiences are incentivizing, such as field trips and hands-on projects, and a lot of the supplies that we've been ordering have been for hands-on projects, including what looked to be like some pretty cool science projects for the students. So I hope we all get a chance to stop by and see summer school in our summer of learning in action because I think we're going to see a whole variety of activities going on. For our upper-grade students, for secondary and junior high school and high school, of course, improved grades are an incentive, and we've been purchasing kits. And those T-shirts are here, Dr. Ford, or they're coming very soon. We have a beautiful, cheerful, inspiring design. And so we're not sharing that with you yet, but you will see it very soon, and we're ordering enough. Many thanks to Assistant Superintendent Anna Escobedo, who's been actively working with the printer to get those ready. So lots of fun stuff happening, very busy week. And with that, I will turn it over to my partner, Sierra Lockridge.
Thank you, Dr. Roundy Harder. Good evening, board. Good evening, President Ford. As Ann mentioned, we are getting ready to open our doors. In addition to the outreach and securing those enrollment, we're going to be opening Monday morning for students and summer school coordinators, summer school admin, summer school teachers have been making schedules, checking out instructional materials, planning together, and having time to learn as well in professional learning directed towards the summer and an amazing Professional Learning Week Institute that is going on right now. In addition, tomorrow, our classified staff has a full day of training for the elementary enrichment piece, which, as you know, is in the afternoons and all day on Friday, and it includes lessons from Calm counselors. Now, Calm is one of our beloved partners and is really going to help them focus on the social-emotional learning of students. And that was a big priority for the board and for all of our stakeholders when we talked about summer. As Ann mentioned, supplies are coming in, they are getting unpacked and checked off and checked out to teachers. I want to thank our library techs and our site teams for making sure that they closed down a school, and then the following day, they opened up another one and checked out those materials again to teachers participating in summer. Also, our family engagement unit, they held a newcomer orientation, and that was very well-received, giving families the information they needed regarding bus schedules and what it would look like to have a newcomer academy this school year. And next slide, please. Hiring. Hiring is something that we are continuing to finalize. We are working to secure all of the remaining needs, and when people were, you know, maybe unfortunately, things came up and weren't able to commit, the HR team has been working really hard to find replacements for them and to make sure that we have all the staffing in place for Monday and beyond for those bridge programs so that we'll be ready to go into an amazing summer of learning. As Ann mentioned, some sites are even investing additional site funds to ensure that all the counseling needs of their students are met, and we think this is going to be a huge advantage to not only the academic but the social-emotional well-being of our students. Next slide, please. And this is the pistol, this is very exciting. Our Equity in Action Institute began on Monday with UCSB's Victor Rios talking about ecosystems of Carino, equity support, emotional support in the lives of marginalized students. It was well-received. We had over 400 staff there, teachers, admin, counselors, school sites, all deeply learning along this theme. Today proved to be an even, another great day as well, as Dr. Jeff Andrade talked about actualizing equity. Perfect title because our theme is equity in action, and he helped drive it home about what it should look like in the classrooms, what it should look like in our school sites, and what it should look like in our district. So moving from just an awareness of equity but into the application. And we are excited that tomorrow on Wednesday, Nancy Frye will join us for inclusive teaching and learning, and the theme of that keynote is literacy for all. Literacy is liberation. Followed up by Thursday, the theme of teaching and learning continues with equitable assessments with Joe Feldman, who the board enjoyed for a study session, and we're ending with our best partner. And we're ending with our best partners, our families and the community, with Dr. Karen Map. So this institute is, you know, very exciting. It's great to see all the teachers at San Marcos engaging in person, in Zoom, in a variety of settings to all make sure that our equity in action is actionable. So thank you. That concludes our board presentation tonight on Summer of Learning. We are super excited to open our doors for summer school on Monday.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hio, are there any public comments, please?
Yes, President Ford, we have one public comment. Monique Duet.
Yes, thank you, Sandra, and thank you, Board. So, you know, I know we're talking about equity and accountability, but one way to be truly equitable, which doesn't necessarily mean that everybody gets the same thing, but it means looking at the needs, those with highest needs, and we try to meet them. And it's no surprise that the highest needs are the students with differences. They have the highest suspension rates of any group, with 9.3% getting suspended. They have, also have the worst graduation rates for trying to get into the UCs. Only 9.8% of them can go straight from our school system into the UCs, whereas for a white person, there's 70% of them. So you see the inequity. Now, the action we could take to help this is, I noticed, summer camp, you've only got about 200 people with differences. Anyway, you've, you don't have as many people as you originally intended. There's 1,000 people could be added. And I think if you're really into equity, let's add those. Offer anybody with a learning difference the opportunity for this summer school and plan next year to offer it to every single one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, President Ford. That concludes public comment on this item.
And thank you. So now I'll open it up to the board. Board members, do you have any comments or questions about the summer program? Please, Ms. Alvarez.
Well, first of all, thank you for all your work. I'm super, super excited about this program and having kids come back on Monday. And thank you to all the teachers and other staff that has signed up for the Summer of Learning. And a couple of questions. In the slide that shows the EMFs, we have 167 in this district and about 77 have signed up. I'm hoping that we can increase this number to at least 50%. Could you give us a little bit more information of the additional efforts that are being made so we can attract more of this population?
Sure. One of our biggest advocates is our Family Engagement Unit. And they have been not only offering these orientations, which are really crucial for making sure families understand the intent and how to go about getting these services. Additionally, school sites and school coordinators have been making phone calls and trying to outreach. Letters went home, and a parent square went out as well, just documenting that their child was invited, that it was going to be a learning as well as an enriching, enriching opportunity. And we are committed to spending this week doing that as well and trying to get to the capacity that we so, so want. Some families, you know, have had, are traveling or may have made other decisions. But when they do tell us that, we go down the list, and we know that we have other kids that have those needs. And our goal is to have all of the students that we can, with the capacity that we are able to, with the staffing we have, be present and be in those seats.
Thank you. And then I have a question. Maybe this is more for you, Dr. Maldonado. I, I love the incentives, so thank you for doing that. And also, in an effort, in the spirit of removing barriers and helping students to be there, I am wondering how we can provide transportation. I know we're in partnership with MTD, but I know of some families that even buying a reduced bus pass is a hardship for them. So I'd like for us to provide a free bus pass for students who cannot afford transportation. For example, students that participate in the Free and Reduced Program and that requested that we make it available to parents.
I guess, I will work with Mr. Tate to look at how we can do that. We'll work with MTD and with the team that is, that's tracking all the students that are coming. And we'll reach out to the parents. To your first question, if I'd like, I may like to ask Maria Larios to add a few more comments to the first question on the participation of EMFs in summer school. So yes, to your transportation. And Ms. Larios, can you please add a little bit more context?
And thank you. Those are all my questions, so thank you. I will listen.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Alvarez, for your question. I appreciate it. And I do want to clarify that the 176 students are newcomer students, grades third through 12th grade. Those are the students identified there on this slide. And we have done a lot of outreach. So our Family Engagement Unit, we've actually also used the services of our promotoras to outreach to families. And as Dr. Anne Roundy Harder mentioned, we, our families have made other decisions. But something that I did recognize just now that was not reflected in those numbers is that some students have opted to attend summer school, not at our newcomer academy, but at their, their local school, because they might have younger siblings who, who are also attending summer school, and their parents want to keep them together. So I'd like to have, I'd like to send you an updated number once, once we have, we have that. But indeed, we are trying our very best. In fact, this week, we hired a counseling intern to work specifically with our newcomer EMFs over the summer, especially our secondary students, to ensure that our, they are on track to graduate. So we're really happy to bring Ms. Hernandez on board with us this summer. So I will make sure to follow up on that as well.
Thank you.
It's important, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, I think that's a very good clarification from Ms. Larios, and it's just teaching us more and more about how we represent our data. So the double counting of kids is important, and we'll make sure that we provide that updated. But good learning for all of us. Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Capps?
Yeah, thank you. I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to confirm that meals will be served at these sites. Excellent. So that's just a really important incentive. Summer is a time when hunger spikes for our kids, as we know, because they're disconnected from our wonderful nutritious meals. And so the fact that close to 4,000 students will be given lunch every day is, we'll really, we'll see a real, that'll have a real impact on poverty, on hunger, on, on child health. So let's get that word out as much as we can. Thanks.
Thanks. Mr. Tate, did you have something you wanted to say?
I just wanted to let you know, we already do offer Free and Reduced passes throughout the whole year to ride MTD.
Yes, thank you. And I'm referring to even the reduced portion is a hardship for some families. I mean, I have four families that have reached out to me asking about transportation. And I'm happy to provide that info to Dr. Maldonado later. But I think it will be a great help for summer. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments from board members? Please, Ms. Munoz.
Yes, I certainly appreciate, you know, the presentation, and then also such a robust summer program in terms of the incentives, the field trips and books and such. It's very exciting, and I hope to, to visit some of the school sites this summer. Thank you. Excited about Monday.
And Ms. Sims-Moten?
Yes, thank you. I'm excited, too. I was just thinking, as we're starting on the seventh, is it possible for us to do like a back-to-school type of nights that we can sign up to go to these sites? You know, we have a calendar that we can go to different sites. Is there a way to do that?
Yeah, we'll send you the VIP calendar.
Okay, great.
Process that we use, so you can do school visits. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Great idea. Thank you so much. Just a couple of questions for our presenters. And yes, we remain even more excited about this program. I wonder if there are any plans for additional creative outreach to the junior high population that's been invited?
Certainly open to other suggestions. I know that we are in the process of making personalized phone calls to families. And as I mentioned earlier, we have a multi-tiered model approach so that we know it's not just a one-and-done, but that we're trying multiple times to reach out to families. I have had some feedback from the junior highs that kids are tired, and some of them are just saying to their parents, you know, "We just need a break. We just need a summer without school, without any pressure." And so I think we need to honor that as well, that even though we would like to have every student there that is eligible, some are choosing to make a different choice. But I do want to say that our sites are trying very hard through personalized approaches to try and get them there. But we are definitely open to any, any, you know, out-of-the-box kind of thinking that we may not have engaged in yet. So certainly open to any ideas now or in email that I can share with the coordinators. We're always trying to, to do our best with our outreach efforts.
Thanks so much. I'm not suggesting any kind of pressure on those students. And I'm always very glad that it's an optional program. I wonder if you could be more specific about how improved grades are an incentive and also what field trips are planned?
Sure, I'll talk about the grades. And then maybe, Sarah, you want to talk about field trips? So in terms of the grades, typically for junior highs, we have had more of an experience focused on social emotional learning. And of course, this year, we know that we need learning recovery as part of that as well. And we would thank Dr. Maldonado for the suggestion around improving grades for the students, particularly for ELA and math, because we will be focusing on math skills as well as literacy fluency and comprehension skills for ELA. And so we feel that it is an incentive for some students to say, you know, if you were struggling before, you can get a bump in your grade. And that, it's more of a, it's not necessarily impacting them in terms of graduation, but it can help them in terms of their sense of self to say, "I did this work, and I'm improving my grade, and it's going to go on my transcript as an improved grade by engaging in the Summer of Learning experience." And so that's what we mean. And it's a little bit different than the high school, because the high school, of course, they, they may be A to G eligible through their grade improvement. And at the junior high, it's related to self-esteem. It's related to being able to say, "I did this myself. I put in the time and the effort, and I improved my grade," which is really important. That's an age I've worked with for many years, and self-concept is very important to them. So I hope that answers the question.
Thanks.
And in regard to field trips in the elementary setting, our kids are going to have an amazing opportunity to explore nature through the Wilderness Youth Project. For our third-grade students, all students will be going to Camp Whittier on the 154 through a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. There is K-2 moxie field trips, as well as the upper grades are going to the Watershed Resource Center, which is a partnership with Explore Ecology. Their garden educators are also coming to our sites to do education and fun exploration of our wonderful campus-based gardens. And because of our partnership with Explore Ecology and a grant that they received from NOAA, our upper grade students are going to go on the Condor. So this is a really great field trip for them. Additional partnerships include the Santa Barbara Public Library, Read, 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 and everybody, I'm sorry, the Dance Institute. So they will be moving, they will be reading. And DPEA is, Does Purpose Engineering Academy has prepared some STEAM opportunities for our kids as well. So there is hands-on art. We have hired art, music, or STEAM teachers for each site. Not all sites have each of those, but at least a guarantee of one per site. So it should be a very enriching and engaging Summer of Learning and movement and exploration.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Just a reminder, this is a report, so there is no action that the board would take. And I see no other hands up, so I don't believe there are any further comments.
President Ford, I just have one more question.
Oh, yes, please.
You know what I'm going to ask for my little ones? Are they taking a field trip?
Yes, Daisy Ochoa could provide the, the field trips on that. But they have been planning as well to have outdoor play, lots of hands-on exploration, and site-specific field trips. I also want to mention, too, that our after-school program is also running at the Franklin Campus. And they have field trips in their curriculum as part of their extended childcare day as well. But I can get those actual trips for you and get back to you on that, because I know that is dear to your heart.
And I'm happy to be a chaperone if, if you need me to. I'm good, you know? I'm ready to put the work in. Thank you, President Ford.
Sounds great. Thank you so much to this team who's done a great job on preparing the experiences for the young people and also for our staff members. And with that, we will move on and back to the action agenda. And we are on number three, which is the approval of the 2021-22 Elementary Reading and Math Core Tutoring and Brown University Partnership, to which I referred earlier with that donation. And I will turn it over to Ms. Escobedo and Ms. Laffridge.
Thank you so much, President Ford and board members. Superintendent Maldonado, so excited. The whole evening, this whole week actually, has been a thrill. But this presentation in particular, I'm extremely excited to be able to introduce and grateful to be able to introduce Susanna Loeb, who is joining us from back east, which, by the way, it's after midnight. And she is from the National Student Support Accelerator, the Annenberg Institute at Brown University, and Audrey Borland, who is the Executive Director of the California Reading Corps and Math Corps Tutoring. And they both are here joining us, waiting patiently for their turn. And I will turn it over to them so they can share with you this information.
Hello. Thank you for having me today. My name is Susanna Loeb, and I'm the Director of the Annenberg Institute at Brown University. I'm sorry about the dog barking. I'm excited to share what we've been learning about tutoring and the potential for tutoring to address student needs that have arisen during the pandemic. The next slide would be great. So rarely in research do we have so much evidence pointing to the promise of an educational approach. Many factors contribute to good schools, from strong instructional materials to effective recruitment, retention, and development of teachers. And it's key at this time to maintain excellent schools. However, if you're interested in helping individual students, particularly those who are not working at grade level, tutoring stands out really as the way to help students accelerate. Researchers have performed over 150 random control trials. These are systematic studies that do a great job of isolating the true effect of a program on student learning. These studies show positive effects on tutoring across grade levels and subject areas, with effects in most cases ranging from a full half-year to more than a year of learning over the course of one academic year of tutoring. The effectiveness of tutoring in many ways is not surprising, given that tutors are able to target the specific needs of each student. And tutoring from a consistent tutor can help develop close adult-student relationships, which engage students in school and improve their overall well-being. Okay, next slide. However, as we know, people define tutoring in many ways, and not all of the approaches are effective. In fact, during the No Child Left Behind era, parents whose children were in schools failing to meet adequate yearly progress for two or more years were able to sign up their children for tutoring outside of school. This may sound like a good idea and similar to what we were doing, but it was not particularly effective. There was little structure, and the average impact was close to zero. Even here, though, during NCLV, tutoring demonstrated some positive outcomes, and those effects tended to be in places with minimum quantity requirements, more structured tutoring sessions, and stronger coordination with schools. So not all tutoring is effective, but evidence does point to several critical elements for effective tutoring, what we're calling what we're calling high-impact tutoring. So let's just go to the next slide. In particular, we've identified seven elements that are critical. The first three are the foundational elements of equity, safety, and cohesion. The programs need to reach the students who need it, need it the most, engage them and keep them safe, and the program has to be well-run. These foundational elements support four model-specific elements related to the tutor, to instruction, to learning integration, and to data use. First, in terms of the tutor, one of the great things about tutoring is that a lot of people can be a good tutor. While certified teachers are excellent, paraprofessionals and many others can also make effective tutors. However, tutors do need training and they need supervision to be effective and to improve as they go. Second, in terms of instruction, effective tutoring requires quite a bit of it. At least a class time three times per week with a ratio of up to three students per tutor. It also requires strong instructional materials so that the tutor has clear direction on effective approaches for working with students. The third model-specific element is integration, how a program is integrated into the student's existing learning. Programs that are embedded in the school day or are directly before or after school are particularly effective. Primarily, this integration with school is important because these programs have higher attendance. And importantly for equity, they're able to reach the students who need tutoring the most. The fourth and last model-specific element of high-impact tutoring is data. High-impact programs use data to understand students' learning needs and to track their progress. These data can come from the school or from the teacher, or the program can do their own formative assessment to track progress and design tutoring sessions to meet the needs of individuals. Regardless of the source of data, what's important is the use of data to tailor the instruction to students. That's, that's the special sauce of tutoring. So tutoring is in many ways amazing. So many studies show that it can be effective. However, in order to really benefits students, it has to be done well and in specific ways. So thank you for having me here to talk about tutoring broadly. I'd now like to turn it over to Audrey Borland from the California Reading Corps and Math Corps, who will talk more about high-impact tutoring for Santa Barbara in particular. Audrey?
Yes, thank you so much. I would love to take you everywhere I go. That was so kind. So I just want to reiterate that I'm the Executive Director of California Reading Corps and California Math Corps. We have absolutely no connection to Brown and Annenberg. Annenberg does the research and says, here's what works. There's large meta-analyses that have occurred and we're one of the program that bubbles up to the top, thankfully. There's a lot of good reasons we do though. So we go to schools through AmeriCorps. So AmeriCorps is like the domestic Peace Corps. So members of your community sign up for a year or more of service. We do notice that tutors that are 55 years of older are more likely to come back. We love having a really cross-generational mix of tutors in a school system. It makes for a wonderful environment. So what this really looks like on the ground for you is that for reading support in kindergarten through third grade, that's one-on-one. And then as the school year progresses, there'll be some tutors that are ready for a little bit of one-on-two with our younger students. For math corps, that targets fourth through eighth grade students. And Santa Barbara could choose to do groups of two or groups of three. At Stockton Unified, they always put us in groups of three. So we're in several counties throughout California, and if anyone has questions around that, I'm happy to answer that. So really, we're here to supplement the good work going on and help you fill out your MTSS model. We're here to provide you some additional people power. And our tutors come highly trained, but then really the deal is there has to be ongoing coaching and support. So the schools themselves, we partner with the school individually to help provide that coaching and then we provide additional coaching and technical support as well. All of this really is based on formative assessments. So assessment at the beginning to know what intervention is appropriate for a student and then to track progress over time in a systematic way and to have data review meetings with the team, triangulate data and move forward. So next slide, please. This is a visual of how that works. So tutors and students are at the heart of everything, of course. And then we talked through that AmeriCorps. We believe thoroughly that we have to really focus on fidelity to the model. It's one thing to say you're going to do something and it can be another thing to do it. So we, we take that in the spirit that it is. It's to improve each other and do the best, the absolute best we can for students. So that's really the focus. Our data systems are coordinated actually across the country and we have lots of different slices that we can do of data that might be appropriate for Sierra or for a principal or a coach at an individual school, depending who needs to see that data. And we're happy to provide that at any time for you. Next slide, please. There are a lot of entities involved, so I decided to just create a slide to try to explain that to people as because at some point I was like, well, I need to write this down for myself. So obviously the school district, you, I'm, I, we implement Reading Corps and Math Corps. So right now, we're in the process of looking around and seeing community members that are interested in tutoring. We also love referrals. And then we have the Annenberg Foundation as well. And they're really that research leg. There is also a research leg within our organization that sits in Minnesota. So then I listed the agreements as well that we're talking about here together. And that concludes my portion. Thank you so much.
President Ford, that concludes our presentation and we are ready to take any questions.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hill, are there any comments, please, from the public?
Yes, we have one public comment. Sheridan Rosenberg.
Hi, thank you. The presentation was very helpful and I just actually have more questions and I know that you may or may not be able to go back and forth with me. And I'm very passionate about tutoring and literacy and math. My, I, you know, I had a son who had an IEP two inches thick and that one-on-one peaceful, quiet, private learning saved him. And even through college and his IEP followed him through college and he ended up graduating with honors very successfully from a private university in Nashville. And I know it was that one-on-one time. And so I'm very passionate about this and I get it. And I guess one of the questions I have is when it comes to this grant, this, this $100,000 in the research, one of the things I've noticed is in a town like Santa Barbara, first of all, it's very expensive to live here. So as far as retention, what I noticed, just, this is just anecdotal with my son. I noticed that it was that one-on-one with the same person or the same few people over the years who just understood his challenges and his learning style. And also he was acquainted, so he was never embarrassed. And so they developed a rapport and a relationship. But then again, I paid for that. I hired that person and for 10 years. So when I think about a program like this, it seems to me that it's an opportunity because training is essential. You know, the road to hell is paved with good intentions and lots of people can really want to engage in a program like this and tutor. But if they're really not trained, it won't stick. And if they're not paid, they may not be able to continue on. So I was just kind of curious if there was any sort of plan moving into the future for our community where this isn't just sort of a research project and we'll train for a few semesters and then everybody splits or people drop out because they're volunteering and they can't afford to keep doing this. And so when I think about sustainability, I'm just wondering if we could think a little bigger about providing especially for high-risk, special-needs kids, especially in the Hispanic community where they would benefit from someone who's bilingual, who, you know, can really see them all the way through is my question because I, I'm super supportive of programs like this because I think personally I saw it change my child and save my child. So thank you. And I see you nodding and engaging.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for those comments and I couldn't agree more. Share that quiet.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Can you hold on one second? Her time is up. Thank you, Ms. Rosenberg.
And that's it for our public speakers. That's right, Mr. Hill?
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, board members, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? Ms. Alvarez?
Couple of questions. Is this tutoring in-person or via Zoom?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It will be in-person.
And who's hiring the tutors? Sorry, is SP Unified hiring the tutors or is Brown?
Contract.
The contractor.
It is being handled and recruited and processed through the Reading and Math Corps.
And of course, I'm sure you do the background check and all of that, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Simms-Moulton, please.
Yes, thank you for that. This is very interesting. A couple of questions. So it may be for either Anna or Sierra. So some of the tutoring we have with other companies here locally, how are we combining these or how are we connecting with those?
Great question. Actually, board member, Ms. Simms-Moulton, we earlier in the year did an analysis of the tutorings that are happening in our school district. We actually reported on it, I think, one of the first board reports that we had. And we realized that in elementary, we did not have, that was a void that we had, which was what started the search for the most, the best quality tutoring that we believed we could offer our students. And that's why we are here today.
So those, thank you for that. So those that are in-person, just as we asked about transportation, will it be at the school sites or how, so they don't, they don't have to travel back and forth to be doing, doing that time? And where will you recruit the tutors from? Local folks here and?
Yes, so Audrey could probably answer that best, but from our conversations, she is recruiting locally. And it has been a mass undertaking for the last couple of months. But Audrey, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to share?
Yeah, local community colleges is a great spot. And then there's the power of the internet as well. So we utilize that to its maximum. And then as we get further into relationships with schools, we look for referrals from schools. There's often, say, a volunteer that comes into the school for something that we can parlay into being a Reading Corps or Math Corps tutor. And just to clarify, there, there is a living stipend that's associated with being an AmeriCorps member. And there's also an educational award to put towards future, past, or current schooling.
So they have to become AmeriCorps member to be a part of that arc? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Capps, please.
Well, thank, this is building on Ms. Simms-Moulton's question about existing tutors. And again, just, just feeling though, as though, remembering Franklin and what Principal Casey Kilgore has done, which was featured in The Independent and talked about a lot here in the board of hire, not hiring, but having volunteer retired teachers back in the classroom. So I just want to acknowledge that and hope that that's part, you know, is supported by this new emphasis and new push. Because again, it just seems like such a smart approach that she's, that she's forged there.
Absolutely agree. And one thing has, is completely different from the other when we're thinking about the multi-tier systems of support. One has its place, the other one has another place, and that's exactly the void that we had, which is what we're trying to fill.
Excellent. Okay, great. And on the finances, I just, I just wanted to understand that this is funded by a donation or that, or not. I saw it written a couple of different ways in the materials. And if so, if you can elaborate on that, please.
Yes, absolutely. So it's actually both and, yes and yes. So we are having partly this being a donation and the other part will also be part of our LCAP funding. This was a huge, huge request from our stakeholders. And it was something that when shared with them, they were very excited to see as part of our LCAP.
And is it, do we know or are you at liberty to say how much the donation is?
Yes, actually, we're very excited and very thankful and grateful to Zoom. They are contributing $100,000 to support this cause and the research, the tutoring and the research.
Okay, I saw the reference to Zoom and I, I thought it was, anyway, I got thrown off by that, but that's fantastic. So thank you so much. And I love the partnership with AmeriCorps. I'm such a fan of AmeriCorps. And so thank you for being here and, and for having this infusion of AmeriCorps into our school system. Thanks.
If I may add, it's a great example of the public-private partnerships and how our local community is helping.
I just wanted to also clarify, Ms. Capps, that, and to other board, the other board members, that we are trying to show those kinds of donations in the, you know, in this sort of standard traditional donations part of the board meeting. So it's, it may be a little confusing, but we want to make sure that the board understands all the kinds of gifts that we get. And Ms. Munoz?
Yes, I also just want to echo the excitement of my sister board members and had the question about, you know, how it was being funded and excellent, you know, presentation and a great, you know, partnership in terms of the, the use of LCAP monies and the generous donation. So thank you. Our elementary school students from kindergarten on up will benefit. And thank you to, you know, the, the Brown University, to Jennifer and to the AmeriCorps involvement too and support. Thank you so much. Our students will benefit.
Thanks. I just have one question for Jennifer, our researcher. First of all, good morning. And I wonder if you could sort of share with us, I love all the intellectual research-based approach to tutoring. What is the definition of that condition of safety and equity? And then how do you ensure it and evaluate it?
And is this okay for me to, to talk? It's like, was this for?
Yes, please.
Yeah, no, that's, that is a terrific question and we are actually working on a rubric for it. But one of it, one rubric is that it really reaches the students who need it in terms of equity. The other often is to make sure that the tutoring is done in an equitable fashion that recognizes the students' needs and works with them as individuals so that it can really reach all students in need. So there's both the instructional part about it. There's the target of it. The safety side is often about, well, you, you asked already for background checks, making sure that the student, the tutors know how to work safely with students and then a good amount of oversight. I think even during the pandemic, we've seen different ways emerge of how you can drop in. Almost all of the, the high-quality programs have supervision going on and so it's part of supervision. So there's the kind of legal part that you have to make sure you're being safe about the data and the background checks. But then you really also want to have a whole process going on to make sure that the sessions are safe in multiple ways, emotionally, physically, all sorts of different ways.
Thank you so much. So with that, board members, there are no further comments or questions. We've had a wonderful presentation. So may I have a motion to approve this item number three, the approval for the 2021-22 Elementary Reading and Math Core Tutoring and Brown University Partnership? Ms. Alvarez, thank you. And a second, Ms. Munoz, thank you. So all in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 Aye. This motion, this contract passes unanimously. Thank you. And good night.
Good morning.
Onto number four. Our fourth item for approval tonight is the request for approving the professional development contract for 2021-22 with Core and Press Incorporated, Fisher and Frey. Is it Frey or Free?
Frye.
It's Frye, Nancy Frye, for implementation of the Elementary Language and Literacy Plan. I'll turn it over to Ms. Escobedo and Ms. Laffridge.
Thank you so much. Again, Board President Ford, I told you it was going to be an exciting evening for me. And I'm delivering on my promise. Thank you on behalf of the students, of course. So we are excited to present to you an ongoing effort, even longer for Sierra Lockridge. And to see it come to fruition tonight is thrilling. Next slide, please. Our anchor graphic that you see here now is a familiar sight to you all. At this point, it has evolved, however, from being just a plan to actually taking place as stakeholder learning and district actions. With no better example of this than this week's professional learning in our Educator Summer Institute, where, like you've heard already, over 400 teachers and administrators have participated in this week. Tonight, we will be introducing to you our new Language and Literacy Plan that will be added to one of these puzzle pieces. And we'll put all our students at the center of equity, climate, and culture and accountability, where we are trying to achieve so that we, because we believe that we are only as good as our lowest-performing student. And so when they all rise, we all rise. Next slide, please. One of my favorite graphics lately, we grow scholars through language and literacy. This is not only at the core of this new Language and Literacy Plan, it is our commitment to our students. At the root, every pun intended, at the root of our Language and Literacy Plan, we have three foundational guides. They are the California English Language Arts, English Language Development Standards and Framework, the State Language Development Goals, Context, Characteristics, and Key Themes, and our very own Santa Barbara Unified Meta Plan. These three guides, braided and merged together with Fidelity, a word we've heard a couple of times tonight, to each other, and their individual components will ensure a necessary balance of sound approaches and the evolved, the evolved science of reading research in literacy, which is inclusive of phonics and phonemic awareness, a goal and the key guiding themes for language acquisition and language development, and of course, our Meta Plan's foundational components and throughlines. We'll make posters and share. Language and Literacy Plan Timeline, like I said, next slide, please. It has been a long time coming. And we'll take a little row down memory lane, starting with 2016, with the inclusion of Writers Workshop TK through six. Then in 2018, we understood the need to supplement our literacy block with phonics. In 2018, we also added the necessary component of Readers Workshop, which traditionally follows Writers Workshop. And then this current school year, due to the pandemic, we were able to introduce the leveled library interventions and only begin our development of a Language and Literacy Plan, which you're seeing today. Finally, our plan for next school years to continue the prioritization of Designated and Integrated English Language Development, or ELD, as part of our daily schedules in our classrooms. Now, to tell you more about this plan, I will turn it over to my partner, Sierra Lockridge.
We are a team here. Currently, and Board, I am so excited to be here. Thank you, President Ford and Board for having me. Currently, Santa Barbara Unified has cultivated student agency and choice and empowered students to see themselves as readers and writers through a workshop approach. This approach has provided literacy-rich classrooms and opportunities for teachers to confer with students, really having that one-on-one to talk about their lives as readers and writers. It also allows for differentiation. It allows for scaffolding and one-on-one, I do, we do, you do approach of reading and writing. However, our current Language Arts approach has been successful for about 54% of our students. That means that 46%, the majority of which are emergent multilinguals, it has not been as successful as we would like. So we know that one of the reasons for that is the need for systematic and intentional, integrated, and designated English language development. As such, as Ms. Escobedo said, that remains one of our main priorities. You should note that we have added word study and vocabulary this year and plan to continue that next year as well. And really are honing in on our phonics. The next slide. So the goal of the Language and Literacy Plan is to merge the asset-based approach of workshop with an explicit focus on ELD, English Language Development, and in improving and incorporating enhanced supplemental materials. These include phonics, phonemic awareness, vocabulary, fluency. So these are decodables, things that kids can read to uncrack the code of reading. Furthermore, it connects language as our throughline for all of our professional development. You heard Dr. Craig Snyder talk about language and math. We're going to be talking about language and science. We're going to be talking about language and all that it takes to be completely literate and have all those capacities of literate individuals. Furthermore, part of this plan also really focuses, in addition to professional learning on language, but the launch of a systematic Tier Two, which you've heard us talk about tonight with SWIFT and MTSS as part of our SIGDIS work and as one of the cores of making sure that kids get exactly what they need. And the tutoring initiative, which we thank you for approving as part of that as well. So the one approach that we really are targeting on is language development. This was something that came out of our Meta Plan. It identified the need for explicit language instruction and to support the students' home language and cultures at home and at school. So research tells us that students need to read, write, speak, and listen in order to convey meaning and to make sense of the world around them. And our heart of this plan is the Meta Through Lines, the focus on language, and the ability to have those additional supports with Tier Two, an expansion of the Tier Three Dyslexia Project, as well as the tutoring which you just approved. Next slide. This slide, I want to point out that you'll notice the students are in the center. Of all the graphics, this is probably one that we really keep close at heart. And we want to thank Superintendent Maldonado for coming in and saying that needed to be right there at the heart. So you'll see our emergent multilinguals, our students with disabilities, our foster, our homeless, and our GATE students represented in that diagram. Surrounding it is language and literacy and Meta, because those are inextricably linked. You cannot have language and literacy without each other. Those go together. And Meta, as you know, came from our community out of a need to support our families and our students on their language, on their literacy, and on their sense of self. And part of that is our identity so intricately connected to language. So we are going to put students at the center. We are going to recognize that language and literacy are dependent on each other. And we are going to prioritize cultural diversity, multilingualism, and bilinguality as valuable assets for our society with an emphasis on shared responsibility of all of the educators in the system. That's that accountability that you saw on the outside. So it's not just the classroom teacher or the site principal, but we now have a tutor. By the way, I was AmeriCorps, and I'm still in education now. So there is longevity to be had. But it is a team effort, and we're only getting better as our systems become stronger. And the steps that you're taking with SWIFT and MTSS will help us get there as well. The next slide, please. The next slide is going to talk about that professional learning. So in order to get there, we have to increase our capital, our intellectual capital, our decision-making capital, our human capital. And one of the really exciting things is we have a partnership with Nancy Frye, who's going to be speaking tomorrow as our keynote, and Doug Fisher, to really focus on the standards, to focus on the standards and to focus on the English Language Development Framework and how to bring all of those language demands to every task and every performance outcome we want for students. Keeping that in mind as we design the instruction and as we present it. So the four questions that you've heard our superintendent talk about come from DeForre's research. And they are, what do we want students to know, right? What do we expect them to learn? Well, this is being buoyed by the new report cards that we are designing. This is being buoyed by the accompanying parent guidance docs that will go out to our parents explaining how these, what these marks mean and how they can support their students. And it's been just part of the professional learning community trainings that we are doing this week. In fact, on Thursday, I get to present at the institute on this very topic. The second thing that we know is, once we know what they're, what we want them to learn, the standards and the designated ELD, we need to know what to do and how we can tell that they got it. And that's the assessment piece. So in addition to these report cards, we have an assessment continuum that lays out for teachers how to keep short little tracks, not all come at the end, summative assessment, like the CAS scores that we hear our public speak often of, that I want to remind the board have not been out since 2019 because of the pandemic. But really, in-time support, because if we know early on, we can do something about it. And that is why this assessment continuum is so important. So what do we want students to learn? How do we know they learned it? That's that assessment piece. What do we do when they don't? That's our Tier Two. That's our tutoring. That is all of the teams working together for that accountability piece. And what do we do when they do get it? How are we going to expand that learning? How are we going to get those GATE icons to be magnified so that it's GATE reach each and every child can reach their full potential? So that is also an opportunity. And the way we do that is by building teacher capacity. We are investing in the people in our system. The investment is for the kids, first and foremost. But the way we can get to that is by thoughtful practice and research-based practice. So Dr. Frye and Dr. Fisher are experts in the field. They are out of the University of San Diego. They have spoken to us last year during the distance learning. They wrote the distance learning playbook, and they are highly regarded and highly in demand. So we are happy to secure time with them. And what this approach will do is focus, one, on the standards. Two, we'll institute instructional leadership teams. These are teams that look at data and make those right decisions for kids so that kids can get the support they need just in time. No autopsy. We are doing it in time so that they get the support they need as they continue to grow. And then lastly, it's also building our principal capacity. This will be done through walkthroughs with the instructional leadership team and through targeted professional development for admin, including the district office and our emerging MTSS staff. So this is why we are bringing the Language and Literacy Plan two. We've been very excitedly working on it. I want to thank all of our contributors and those people at the Superintendent Advisory Council who also provided feedback. And we know that we will continue to grow this plan and enhance it at your recommendation and from our stakeholders as well. And I think I turn it back to Anna Escobedo.
Next slide, please. Gosh, that was great. Sierra. I think, I feel like there's no more to say. You have a visual right here. This visual tells you what our next steps are. You've heard everything you need to hear. And with that, we will take whatever questions you may have.
Thank you very much to both of you. So I'd like to ask Mr. Hill if we have any public comments on this item, please.
Yes, we do. We have one comment.
Thank you.
Sheridan Rosenberg. Ms. Rosenberg, can you hear us?
Yes, I, sorry, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
So I have a couple of questions. Corwin is owned by Sage Publications. It's right there on the document, which is owned by Sarah Miller-McCune. And what I see is, I'm curious, is this $220,000 donated to the district for this? Or is the district paying for this? Because if it is, you guys have conflicts of interest here. I don't really understand what Corwin's role is. It seems very vague. It's some sort of training and workshops to the tune of $220,000. But, you know, when Ms. Simms-Moten is on the Grant Review Committee for the McCune Foundation, Laura, it's no secret that Sarah funded your campaigns, both of them, for the, for, you know, the county election and then for, you know, for school board. Kate Ford, you sit on the Board of Dem Women of Santa Barbara County, who Sarah Miller-McCune has, you know, donated to, you know, it's, this isn't a secret here. And I see that this is a flagrant abuse of taxpayer funds and huge conflicts of interest. I really also want to point out that Corwin's come under fire nationally for curriculum that's rooted in critical race theory, which is, you know, it's irrefutable. Critical race theory is abusive. It's toxic racist abusive curriculum that's coming out of Corwin. It's owned by Sarah Miller-McCune, who has relationships with all of you. You know, maybe perhaps not for Ingenia Alvarez. I don't really know about Rose Munoz. But this, quite frankly, this stinks. This should be tossed. And I don't even really see the role that it has to play with literacy right now. And of course, you know, we've been hopping up and down about literacy and math. We support that. But I also see it interwoven with Meta. And Meta right now is very controversial. Parents at McKinley don't want it. They don't want it. It belongs at Adelante Charter School. Just expand Adelante Charter School. Let parents decide. Don't let it hijack a neighborhood school that is a very vulnerable neighborhood school that should focus on English immersion, phonics. I love hearing about phonics. I love hearing about math support. I love hearing about language support. But Corwin has no business interloping and interfering with this. And I mean, quite frankly, even if it was free, but is this $220,000 going to be another no-bid contract? It's going to go straight to Sarah Miller-McCune's publishing company? Because if it is, it's rotten on its face, and you all know it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment on the.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Ms. Alvarez, please.
Thank you. Thank you for that great presentation, and thank you for addressing the tutoring and the literacy. Just, I'm beyond grateful that we are doing this. I do have a couple of questions for you. We have so many wonderful programs coming. How are we going to balance and coordinate them so that we do not place the teachers in a situation that it's information overload, that these programs are competing with one another? So that's one question. And the other question is, thank you for building the capacity so that we can continue this legacy. And maybe I didn't hear you when you covered this. Are we also including our district leadership in this training so that we have the capacity from, you know, at all levels? And also, the other point that I like to make is that I am happy that we're using Title II. I am happy that we're using Title II monies that are specifically designated to use for teacher training and development. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. And I'm ready to listen now.
Thank you for those questions, Board Member Alvarez. So yes, this is something that we have talked about as cabinet, as, with our principals, and of course, with our stakeholders. Part of the plan is to plan. We have to start with the planning. And I think Dr. Maldonado, a while back, said, we are investing in people, not programs. And part of the reason to invest in people is so that everybody has a role to play. Again, going back to that multi-leveled, multi-tiered system of support. So it will be systemic, which is why we needed to get the ball rolling. And this is why we started now with our learning. And this is why everybody is involved in that learning. But we know that the planning is really going to be key here. And as cabinet members, leading these different initiatives, that planning has already begun so that we can ensure that the rollout and the understanding of everybody's roles in that and the long-term backwards planning of that so that it is effective for all and inclusive of all the key stakeholders and players is clear and focused. The other question that you had, and I think I answered it, was, are the leaders going to be part of this? And yes, again, they are part of it this week. They will continue to be a part of it. And we will continue to get their feedback and input to see how we can continue to improve as we go through the learning together. But this entire partnership is inclusive of teams of people that include teachers, classroom teachers, instructional leadership members, and of course, administrators with the support staff, the coaches.
Any other questions, Board members? Thank you. I just have a couple. First of all, I just want to say I believe this is a comprehensive, really smart plan. And I appreciate it so much. I also really appreciate the candor that you shared about how we're missing, missing out on being successful with 46% of our students and your plans for systematic approaches to both phonics and language development. So thank you so much. I am wondering if you could just be a little bit more detailed in your description of the expansion of the Dyslexia Project.
Sure. I have had the privilege of reporting to this board and also to the Santa Barbara Ed Foundation, who helped launch our Dyslexia Project on the merits of that program. And as you know, when you do early intervention, it works. And as such, part of this plan and part of our LCAT plan is for every site to have that support. And that is what I mean by expansion of the Tier Three Dyslexia Project. But it's not just for those students. We also have the Tier Two piece. And we want to make sure that we are really using those screeners and the data to put the right kids with the right services and so that they can be back in Tier One because their teachers are going to have this amazing professional development and giving them an opportunity to really grow as readers and writers with phonics, phonemic awareness, vocabulary, and word study embedded as well.
Thank you. I have tremendous respect for Doug Fisher and Nancy Frey. And I think we're very lucky to score this. And I have, I am totally in support of this contract. So Board members, I wonder if I may have a motion to approve this item number four, the approval of the 2021-22 Professional Development Contract with Corwin Press Incorporated, Fisher, and Frey for implementation of the Elementary Language and Literacy Plan.
I so moved, and I look forward to updates on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And a second. Thank you, Ms. Munoz, for your second. So all in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And now on to our final action item. This is the approval for the new Certified Management Job Description and Staff Position called Chief Operations Officer. And I will pass it over to Dr. Beckio.
Thank you very much. And good evening, Board President Ford, Board members, Dr. Maldonado. I bring this item before you tonight. It's really a unique opportunity for us. But I want to just spend a couple of minutes explaining. First of all, I believe that any organization, any good, healthy organization reexamines its organizational structure frequently. And we certainly aren't the same organization as we were a year ago. And we are not going to be the same organization as we are a year from now. And so, to my point, reexamining how we're structured organizationally, what kind of processes we have in place is an important component of being an effective organization. But on top of that, when you have vacant positions, I've always believed that that's also a time where you in particular target those spaces to see if there's places for improvement of your organizational structure or efficiency. And so what I bring you tonight is a proposal for your consideration to look at, we have a vacant position currently, a director position that's vacant. And we have an opportunity to shift those resources, shift that resource to a new position, to restructure in a way that'll help us to provide better services to our sites. The, you'll remember that we have recently, with new monies, hired probably, I think, 75 or 80 new certificated staff, over 100 classified staff, and several management positions. If you remember a couple board meetings ago, maybe more than that, I shared with you the percentage breakdown of what we're spending our new money on. And we're spending about 62% of our new monies on certificated staff, about 32% on classified staff, and on about 7% on management. We actually, those management positions, by the way, are at school sites. But I want to make sure that we're really clear that there is a really important function that district office administration and staff plays in the support of our school sites and those new positions. And so what I'm bringing before you is a very unique opportunity in this sense. If you take a look at the background information I put down in this item, the $250,000 includes statutory health and welfare benefits. I needed you to know the cost of the position itself. But what also I wanted the board to know and the public to know is that this actual shift in our organizational structure will amount to less than $30,000 increase to the budget. And the way we're doing that is by, is, like I said, there's a vacant position. There's also a couple other shifts that, where we to get approval tonight, we'll begin making some other shifts that'll help us to fill that gap. And the cost to us will be less than $30,000. So I wanted to make sure that that was a really clear point because I know the board item does indicate the price, the total cost of the position. But the increase to the budget, again, is less than $30,000. So we, with that, I would be happy to turn it over to you for any questions that you might have that I might be able to answer or Dr. Maldonado might be able to answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Maldonado, did you have any other further comments? Thank you. Then, Mr. Heel, are there any public comments on this item? I didn't see any earlier.
No public comment.
Oh, thank you very much. That leads us right into any questions or comments from board members about this proposed position. Ms. Capps, please.
I just want to thank Dr. Beckio and Dr. Maldonado. That context was key. I just encourage you to remember that it's always important. Because again, when you, new positions, sort of bureaucratic at the top here in the district, there's a natural suspicion or curiosity, I should say, maybe more benefit of the doubt of what's going on there. How come they're adding? And so the fact that this isn't, this is just a replacement and a shifting of resources from a vacant position is really helpful at the time when, again, teachers have had, everybody has had such a strained year. And so I just want to give support to those teachers who did reach out to us about this position and to hope that this context is welcome as they understand a little bit more about what this means and how this will help. And just encourage you, like I said, to think in that lens as you're making these shifts or any kind of staffing decisions. How they're presented is very important in the front end. So with that, I'll just also add that, you know, Chief Operating Officer position at an organization, 150-plus million dollars, makes a lot of sense. And I support the direction that this is, that you're moving in. And I really appreciate too, Dr. Beckio, the initial framing of this conversation that this is a different organization than it was a few years ago. We have a new superintendent. And of course, there's going to be structure, restructuring of positions and reevaluating of effectiveness. So I welcome that and give it my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Thank you, Ms. Alvarez.
Thank you, Dr. Beckio, for that explanation. I'm hearing you correctly that, in essence, we are eliminating one position that is vacant right now. And we're shifting those resources that were already budgeted to a different position. But we are not increasing the budget by $200,000. I want to make sure that's very clear. And I also want to thank all the teachers that have reached out to us asking for clarification and assure them, once again, we are not increasing the budget by $200,000. We are shifting the resources. And this was analyzed. And our intent and our conclusion is that this position will be supporting district in a different level than what we already have. And also, ultimately, it will result in benefits to the sites and to the students, which is what we're all here about. And in addition to that, we, Superintendent Maldonado was hired and given a charge for student achievement and other things. And it will allow her to focus on that charge that she was given when she was hired. So I want to make sure that we understand that, that it's one elimination and it's a shift of resources. So thank you. And I know that it's coming back next board meeting. If you could please bring back at the next board meeting the math of what we are, how we are shifting and the bottom line of the impact to the budget. That would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other board comments? Thank you, Ms. Sims-Mouton.
Yeah, I would just add on to my sister board members that appreciate that context that you provided ahead of time and know that there's been a deep analysis of this. And we hired Superintendent Maldonado, Dr. Maldonado. It was different the day you came here. We were right in COVID. And so we're going to be forever different. And so we have to make sure that we're responding in a way that helps us move forward, strengthens us as an organization. Again, centered around student outcome. How do we support our teachers? And again, we appreciate the comments with regards to our teachers. That's very valuable. We really take that into consideration and want to, you know, look at that perspective. But this is also looking at fiscal efficiencies. Whereas, as we've said, you know, across here, that we're not adding an additional $200,000. We're being fiscally, in terms of how can we make this the best way we need to do to respond to our future now and in our future. Certainly understanding that, having had to do that myself. I really do a deep analysis. What, you know, what we needed in July when you came and what we needed just six months ago is different. And we need to make sure that we are also an organization that responds to the future with regards to that. So I appreciate all the comments. And I really appreciate, you know, the context around that. And I appreciate the teachers, you know, you're keeping us on our toes, keeping us accountable. But it's important, as Ms. Capps said, in terms of making sure that we're upfront, what we're looking at and why we're doing this, so that's real clear. Because oftentimes misinformation gets miscommunicated because there's assumptions there. So I appreciate that and I totally support this.
Ms. Munoz, please.
Yes, I also want to say, you know, thank you to Dr. Beckio in terms of the presentation. And I echo, you know, the comments by my sister board members in terms of how we have changed, how we have evolved since Dr. Maldonado came on board, and how we're going to continue to improve. Also, we're looking at, we have an eye on the future, but also that it's not a new position, that it's a way of restructuring so that we're being, have transparency with our community, with our teachers, and that the structure will provide an ongoing analysis of how we can improve the achievement of all of our students. And so, you know, it certainly has my support. And I think, I know that all of our students are going to benefit, our underrepresented students, our students with special needs, our, you know, dual-language students and such. So yeah, thank you.
Thanks. I completely agree with the other comments that have been stated here tonight. Thank you, Dr. Beckio. And I believe this proposed position leads to excellent support for Dr. Maldonado, which leads to excellent support for the district schools and staffs, and ultimately, excellent support for our students, which I am so delighted to say have been the focus of tonight's meeting. So with that, Board members, I'd like to know if I may have a motion to approve item number five, the approval of the, oh, I'm sorry. The, it's, there goes my, the approval of the, it's just missing here. The approval of the Chief Operations Officer position. It's a new certified management job description and staff position.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Sims-Mouton. And a second?
A second.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Munoz. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously. With that, I would just like to say that there are no consent items to return to this evening. So Board members, I hope you've referred to Agenda Items J and K for the coming events and also for future Agenda Items. Please let me know tonight or in the near future of any additions you'd like to make to either of these lists.
President Ford, if we can start thinking of a date, perhaps in the summer for a goal-setting meeting for next fiscal year, that would be great.
Absolutely. We'll put that down. And happy to say that Dr. Maldonado and I have started having conversations about that. So Board members, our next meeting is Tuesday, June 22nd, a regular board meeting for June. We begin at 6:30 PM. And at this time, the plan is for the meeting to be livestreamed and public participation to be virtual participation only, given the governor's announcement last week. So as we adjourn tonight, I only want to echo the wise words of our outstanding student speaker tonight, Ms. Carachure. Remember who we are, where we came from, and who we want to be. Remember the people who paved the way for us. And as we look forward to next year, let us all be dreamers and a district of dreamers. Tonight's meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District is adjourned. Good evening.